I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Welcome to election day.
Vote early, vote early.
Twenty twenty.
They're late. We started two hours ago.
I I I seen that the man was sitting out there.
Or three, three hours.
Okay. Has everybody has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? We have any conflicts of interest or objections to the agenda that's written? And none, it stands. Madam Auditor, would you read us the minutes of the last meet last meeting and then the one before?
Yeah, I'll do the one before because it's short and sweet. How about that?
Sounds great.
This was that PTO meeting that we had that y'all that the department heads had that you came to. October twenty sixth of twenty twenty three, the Board of Supervisors, June Hyden, Craig Dozark, and Dave Mulbauer attended a discussion with the courthouse department heads and Jack Reed of INCS about PTO paid time off in the law enforcement conference room. That was that. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please. And then this is October thirty one, twenty twenty three. The Board of Supervisors met at nine A M. with Ty Rossford, chairman presiding. Members present Schultz, Dozark, Rossford, Mulbauer, and Hyden. Oh, Hyden attended via Zoom. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. Excuse me. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozark to approve Silver Queen Wind Farm road use and maintenance agreement. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer to approve the twenty twenty four county five year program. Resolution one point one modifying the finding source for the bridge on County Road E sixteen along North Line of Section twenty one B R S, County twenty four, one thirty one, sixty twenty four, one hundred and sixty thousand from Hundred Canyons. Motion passed unanimously. Donovan Childress, Tim Deber, and Connie McGee and Louise Galbraith gave the board an update on TAP. The current county contribution is forty dollars a month. With the board's consent, it will increase November first to one hundred dollars a month. Michelle Carlson of Family Crisis Center gave the board an update on the services they provide to residents of Crawford County. The Family Crisis Center is requesting funding of fifteen thousand for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Jason Blunt, Crawford County Week Commissioner, presented the board his annual report. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hyden to approve the Week Commissioner's annual report. Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at eleven oh seven A M. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty P M preceding the next meeting.
Do we have any? I should have probably asked another one. Do we have any additions to that? It was just a list that was there. Does anybody want anything added to that? Have you heard that we're there?
No.
Okay, then I want to stand and agree. Is there any additions or corrections or objections to the current minutes or the past minutes, last meeting? Hearing none?
Yeah, we, Michelle or Megan put in some more details as requested
Thank you.
on some of those items. So if you see though, you know, when we present them to the board ahead of the meeting, please feel free to let us know if there's any details that any of you all want on any of the items that are presented on the minutes. Because they are your minutes. So we, you know, we 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 mostly want to hear from you.
Most of your input.
Maybe, yeah.
Reason we brought that up is I had a couple of calls from people that were wanting to know why we didn't have more detailed than a minutes.
Yep, right.
And and I did remind them that you can always go back and check our our recordings because we post them now, but we didn't. And they asked, well, what happens if that would get the website to go down or something? And that was a valid point. So Terry and I talked about a little bit after last week's meeting about doing just a little bit better job.
Yep, some of the dollars and cents details, some of the names, whatever, different things like that, that might help.
I didn't notice, I guess, any difference between what you read and what you posted, what was posted.
No, because I talked to Megan before she posted.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, 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 we had just talked about it, just adding those little details.
You know, especially if somebody comes in on citizens input, they want to be recognized that they talked during the public forum and things like that, too.
We can do some of that. We won't probably put the whole conversation. We'll just summarize and
What they put in.
Because it is, I mean, it's, I know it's the public's right to know the minutes, to know what went on in the meeting. But it's very expensive.
Yeah.
Publish it anymore. So we just got to find that happy medium. So we provide good information, at least enough that prompts questions maybe or whatever. So, yeah.
Somebody speaks in the citizen's input, at least it'll say, you know, so and so in the pub and then they go back and listen to the video they're interested in with that person.
But they have the ability to go back and actually watch.
Yeah, that's a big, yeah, it's nice.
Exactly.
It's nice to go back and and watch those.
And remember.
You bet.
Okay, Supervisor's report. Kyle, would you like to lead us off to?
Well, I don't. It's pretty short. I got Conservation Board meeting Monday, Monday night. About it. Oh, that was quick. Short, right?
Yeah.
I missed that beating around what you said. Conservation Board meeting Monday night at four fifty. Okay. The part.
I remember when. Please, you used to let you have a break.
All right. Oh, yeah, yeah, good. That was, I forgot about that, yeah. Usually, I don't, Dave and I have had a past history of popping popcorn about this time of year and raising money for, we've been doing the Christmas Crusade is what we've been doing. After last week, I almost, I was moved that maybe we could do one for TAP this year instead of raise money for TAP. I'd almost be willing to come in two days. Two on three, or.
That's a good idea. I mean, I was pretty moved by TAP and who they all reached in. And know that those people are, you know, getting fed.
Maybe we do multiple, maybe we do multiple ones for TAP and have them bring non-perishable item or and money donation too. Either, you know, either or both.
So what do you guys usually do, I guess? Just pop popcorn, pop popcorn here at the courthouse, like down in the corner of the public?
Yeah, sometimes if we let the banks and the businesses know uptown, they'll pop over and pop over like that and get some.
Yeah, like make sure you let me know and then I'll make sure it gets on.
Yep, and then when you do it for TAP, you can ask, I mean, if you want to deal with the produce. Some of them guys will like Wes Fern, he'll come up and bring it. I'm sorry, I talked over you.
No, you're fine. No, we already talked.
So I guess.
Perfect.
I mean, if that's the board, we are pretty happy to help. We should.
Yeah, if we did that for a couple of different days, I mean, you you did successful with the kids crusade. I hate to not do that, too. I mean,
We could deliver it to the banks since if they could give a donation for it, you know, kind of a deal and.
The Christmas Crusade stuff, that's usually, that's done by like that first week in December already. They want all the
Right.
toys and stuff and money or whatever towards that already. So we're going to do that. Thinking, geez, we'd better get going on that already then, so. Well.
Kelly owns a popcorn machine.
Yeah.
There was one, although there's always been one in the courthouse.
Well, Louise had it in her office to begin with. And then Assessor's Office started doing it, but I don't think they're doing it anymore. So we're kind of trying to figure out.
Put a stop, that's kind of when we started when COVID, because they, you couldn't, it used to be about one Tuesday a month we'd get popped.
Yeah, we'll figure out another place to do it.
I was going to, if we're doing TAP, I was going to talk to Louise about helping with that again, but yeah.
If you do though, about like Citybug, how to get on it, and I think you almost want to, you don't want to be back to back.
Right.
No, but.
That's a good, yeah.
We could almost do one next week.
Because one will suffer more, you know, for, yeah.
When I was looking at the calendar card and just throwing dates out there, if you did like, what do we usually do it on Wednesday?
Yeah.
If you did like the fifteenth or the twenty second with one of them, maybe TAP, and then two to three weeks later, the first week, second week of December, you do Christmas Crusade.
Eight months and before.
Remind you Christmas first.
Yeah, let's do the Crusade, let's do Christmas Crusade next week on the fifteenth if we can.
Fifteenth?
So Kyle, do people like give you a dollar for the popcorn or how?
Oh, it's way more than that. I think last year we were at almost twelve hundred bucks, I think.
Oh, okay, okay. I just kind of.
That you can, I will be at an ISAC board meeting in Des Moines. But just so you don't need me, I mean, you guys can still do.
I will help.
Me too.
Oh, fifteen.
Yeah. I will probably be gone.
That's fine, you're gonna, you're gonna have to help. We got four.
Don't make any stupid decisions.
Fifteenth, I'll announce that today that you'll probably be doing that next fifteenth.
Yeah, I'll put it in the minutes.
Right. And then. But I'm doing it when I do my radio thing.
Oh, okay. And we'll do that after every meeting?
Yeah, I go up there in the afternoon.
That's nice.
That's.
Kempson always called me.
Yeah, well, so he called me until he left and then nobody did that for a while and now now Mick likes you to come up there because it sounds better.
I'm sure.
He does a real good job of asking questions and keeping it going. I met him, you know, several times and I'm.
Maybe we can do the twenty nine.
Voice for radio.
They introduced him at Rotary and he said.
I was always told that I had a face for radio.
Me too.
And we could do the twenty ninth for TAP then, perishable, bringing a perishable good or?
Yeah, twenty ninth.
Donation and perishable item.
Sounds great. Yeah, actually, I gave a pretty good report on TAP when he got done with the meet. He said, you know what, I should have them up here. I said, yes, you should.
New bathroom.
Ah.
He usually puts me on Saturday mornings.
Oh, so you'll tape it.
Time we start in. Tape it today.
Today, and then.
And I suspect he fills it in, you know, if there'd be a slow news week, he might put me earlier, but he's been doing me on the podcast on Saturdays last week.
All I request is.
He does put bits and pieces in like at noon, you know, and I've heard.
Is that not a, I don't, totally mood on the second floor?
I do sometimes.
It's in the conference room. I think it would be received.
But I just try to give a good report. I last and and sometimes he runs out of time and he'll cut a whole session out last week. I'll have to give it again, you know, what she did. I thought it was a good thing to let the county know.
Oh, yeah, that was, Mary's done that in the past. I'll talk to her about it.
I'll put a page page.
Anybody.
To do those gift certificates or whatever, the extra prizes.
Thought we'd do that this week.
So, yeah, maybe we could just pop popcorn right out here or in here or something like, what time do you start? I usually, we usually get here around eight thirty or so, okay?
Can we start at about nine?
Nine, and we're usually done by noon. You know, how do you get the popcorn?
We've got it.
I was talking.
Down in the.
Assessor's Office, I talked to him about popcorn popper today and I think they got oil. And it's always, you just got to run up to Rita or whatever, grab some more popcorn. So if you donate some popcorn or anything.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
I don't know if they donated or what, but.
We have a popcorn fund, so whoever buys it, we can reimburse them.
I see. Okay.
We'll have to see if we have enough for the flavorings and stuff, too. We usually have some of those.
So let's, yeah, let's plan on next Wednesday and then we'll get hit it again on the twenty ninth for TAP.
Sounds great. Way to go, team.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or twelve thirty.
All right, is that all you got then, Mr.?
Well, I did, and Paul, I'm sure will report. I talked to him yesterday. He's open by end of week. Possibility the bridge could be opened south of Rickett, because the yard rail people get it for.
That's all I said that.
Just have a ribbon cutting.
Well, I, I guess, told Paul, we originally talked about having a cold beer and fireworks, but now we're just, we'll have whiskey.
Yeah. Something warm.
But that would be nice.
It'll be good to have it done and then I'm sure people who were a little frustrated will forget after they drove over for a week or so thinking, that's a good, that was a good trade. We got a good grid.
Yeah.
I hope, anyway. Okay, Mr. Mulbauer, what do you have?
Not much.
About to make my own.
Um, no, I I got a couple of meetings coming up next week, it's the board director's meeting. I'll drive out to Des Moines for the day. We have a meeting there and then the Zoom meeting following that and they're kind of getting geared up for all our, you know, you go to ISAC University and statewide supervisors meeting and a lot of those things that are coming up that we're planning for now.
Yep, great.
There's two for me. We curious, talked to Paul, too, about the vanilla shot. I know they moved in.
They're setting up puddings for it, aren't they?
And started. But not sure how far. I know Paul was hoping it can get quite a bit done while it's good weather.
Yeah.
That's gaining.
Will resurrect the soup cook off when they get the new shop done?
Probably need to. See what time of year it is, you might need to have to whip out the grills and do some barbecuing.
They got some pre-made soup.
Hey, winner, winner, chicken dinner, chicken soup. That was the Buck Girl Shop was new. So we had east side, west side, and then the courthouse and a soup.
Yeah, the drafting and.
Yeah, soup cook off or whatever. And the supervisors at the time were the judges. I was on the west side of the county. We made homemade noodles and chicken. I mean, we made the noodles and everything there. We didn't even get an honorable mention. We lost to some my, my bland chili, but anyway. So the second year, second year, I think we had it down here in the shop.
Yeah.
We didn't win again. Third year, the west side guys said, hell with it, we'll just go out to ham fry and buy some bags of soup. We've won. Haven't had it ever since. For ham fried and their.
Their soup is good. Yeah, they got good, too.
Well.
That's pretty funny.
Talking, yours is not good, I guess, right?
Apparently not. Who made noodles and stuff?
I know, that's going to score some points.
And everything right in the shop there, so.
Oh, my.
And I had a good chance for me because I love that one. A big fat.
I know.
You bet. I love that.
Well, you like them the way grandma made it.
Yeah, there you go.
Maybe you don't like them without color.
Well, yeah.
Need her kitchen table to roll them on.
Not a work, not a greasy old workbench.
Yeah, not a greasy one. That may have been.
Really art spots on your noodle, doesn't it?
Move their rinses, we got to cook today.
They call that flavor, right?
That's right.
Another past tradition that we haven't done, I don't think, for quite a while. Supervisors around Christmas time used to go out for supper together with their wives and husbands and daughter.
Yeah, we haven't done that since we went to the casino.
Oh, when you do your, your, yeah, your meeting, your, I don't even know what you call that.
We had a retreat with the engineer usually that had a big pile of, big project, but, yeah, that one we went to, that kind of blew up and.
Yeah.
COVID got that, too?
No, it was a lot of heartbreak
Right.
of having a meeting outside of the county because it wasn't official meeting.
Oh, boy. We could have.
So now you just need? We could go to, you know, we could go to, do something like that, you know, get closer to December, Christmas or.
Wrong will be open soon.
Do that, too.
Yeah, they said always the board chairman.
It's going to be a Monday.
Right.
Had a lot of bonus points at the casino, I think, when I was down there. Surprise I haven't heard of Monday, seriously.
Yeah.
Which was fine with me, but after the public weighed in, I kind of agreed.
I, I think they were.
I don't think it'd be out of line to go somewhere within the county to have a evening supper.
Even though we paid for everything out of our own pocket, I think, on that deal, so it wasn't like we were.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, we could do, that was always. It was all right.
Wow.
Not resounding in order.
I think we were all in this, all be able to do it. We borrowed him and his wife, Matt, going down to Omaha or something like that.
That's not yet.
Oh, you stayed the night down there?
Yeah.
Yeah. I sent someone from my office. Was it Amy?
Amy, yeah. Amy Kelly.
You will. All right, Eddie, that's a good plan. Good idea. I like that, actually. You want me to set something up?
Yeah, I mean, I would, whenever. Whenever, it's kind of up to you.
Yeah.
Usually kind of happen around I don't know, the budget time it seemed like or after, but.
How ironic, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, if you want to wait until.
It used to, you know, it used to be dinner at.
She's a better party organizer than.
I am a party organizer. You guys have no idea.
Kind of December maybe.
You can do it in December that I can.
Yeah.
I might, I might solicit the assistance of my board vice chair.
I'll help you.
Party planners.
Party plan for you.
Well, then there was debate, I remember back to the, I was at Houston Hall, I wasn't all the department heads brought in. So then we were trying to figure out a scheduling process on get, and then it's like it kind of just fell apart.
You kind of want to do, uh, put some ground rules down on budgeting or whatever. So that might, if we do it ahead of time, if we do it in December, it might not be a bad idea. You might get a lot of more.
Trying to make it into a meeting then or just get, get out?
It would be an unofficial, it would be an official meeting.
Right.
Yeah, because we're, when we're all together, it's a meeting. I mean, do we want to really talk shop or just?
That's usually what we were doing. We were talking plant, basically.
I mean.
Paul's planning session and because we are his.
You know, we did it in the conference room, I think, in the last couple of years. The last time we did it, talked his five year plan, talked his, his vision. Yeah, all that stuff. Other departments might have some of that to talk about, too. I don't know.
Yeah, maybe that's where we do it, is just have it in that conference room. I don't know.
I don't know either.
I mean, did you do that with the spouses? Yeah. I think.
That one year we did.
Yeah, the year we went and had the Omaha, then the spouses went.
With the girls.
That spouse thing, you know, whatever they did, shopping or casinoing or whatever they did. Yeah. Sure, I guess I just can't see my spouse being real interested in that.
Have you met my spouse? Yeah, he's going to love me that with the girls while we have.
We'd have citizens input with Jerry's, wouldn't we?
You could take them on adventure. Supper within the county to crunch your tines, we could just make it supervisor Terry and our spouses. If you want to have more of a planning strategic meeting.
We could have.
Right.
We just have it with. Yeah, so if you intertwine the two and like Craig and my wife would say, well, now that's it, true.
Even if you're feeding me, I'm not going.
Yes. I, I, I thought. We could have, and that'd be up for, up to you to decide, I mean, where to go and plan.
That probably was more appropriate.
Social get together for us, board supervisors
Yeah.
around the holidays.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking we were talking about. It's just more of a social get together for the supervisors and obviously we have to have our own, but it ain't that we'd be talking shop with them and leaving everybody else out.
Would you have to talk shop with you?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
All day long?
Yeah, and I mean, talking a little shop, we can do that if she's there, but just our shop instead of everybody else.
And if we want to have a strategic meeting with Paul and some of the other department heads, then maybe we need to set up a day.
Just do that, yeah. Do it through the afternoon after our meeting there.
Do you have any idea when our numbers will start to come in?
Thank you.
Um, I don't because I know they're still working on the forms, I think, in the Department of Management stuff. Um, they said the valuation stuff isn't open yet. So, uh, and, uh, as far as like TIF filing, the cities that filed TIF with me, um, that due date is December first. So.
It's a little hard to do if you don't have all the valuations.
Yes, well, we have valuations, TIF affects theirs.
Okay.
Because hard for us to get started on a budget without knowing.
Right.
Revenue. And I've had a lot of, a lot of people, I think there's some misconception. And it's back to what I think we talked about this before. We were like, well, how can the county have less revenue going forward with these properties? My, my assessed values and my taxes went up big time. And they just aren't understanding.
That's only part of the equation.
Right, and that it's not board of supervisors taking it all in. They think, oh, my tax went up, you're getting it all in.
Yeah. The state adjusts. And the state adjusts, I mean, the state has set those rollbacks and the ag one looks really different than I think it was that. I have to look again. Sorry, I'm in the middle of an election, so my brain is kind of going
Just let, let them vote how they want to.
Oh, is that how that works?
Just let them vote.
Oh, I know, it's
You look, that's the thing with, with the, with our tax levy is they don't realize there's an algebraic equation, it's not just a
That's true.
About one to one, it's not dollars to dollars. That's not dollar to dollar, exactly, there's an algebraic equation involved.
It's true.
So that's kids that told, got told that you don't use algebra ever again, don't become a supervisor. We use algebra all the time.
You know, people do, they, they say a lot, well, my tax went way up, so how can the county have less?
Creative math, yeah.
Look at where it's all going, you know, state and schools and the hospital.
Is anybody seeing the big project the school's doing down on, uh?
Yeah.
Oh, that's crazy.
I've been watching it on Facebook, yeah.
I've been watching it in real time, real live, you know, because, uh, I went to high school there. Well, that says something in itself that you went to high school there. I'm just saying, because I went to middle school there.
I wasn't to go to school at Donna Reed.
And that's when it was a three-building complex.
Yeah.
And Central was there, right, when you were there?
Yes.
The high school was where the middle school is, and then, did you go between the two buildings in high school?
No.
Or was the middle school? You were there.
Right.
I mean, because those were the only, at one point in time, those three buildings, Central and the two that were there were the only buildings of the Dennis School.
Yeah, back in the day. Yeah. Back in the day. It was, yeah, I know, I just
So Central was elementary.
Excuse me.
Central was elementary.
Yeah. Yes.
And then that building that they're tearing down was the middle school, is that correct?
Uh, there was a band was in there and jam.
Cause I was there in middle school myself.
See, and I went
We just had shop in the basement, band and art upstairs, home ec is in the middle.
Yeah.
Um.
So does this wife, you guys' education then?
This what?
Wife, your education? It's all no and void.
No, they did that when they tore down the Chiron School.
Oh, yes.
See, I went to fifth grade at Chiron.
Because
Because they were tearing down the central building.
Yeah.
When I went to fifth grade. Really? So they bussed us to Chiron in fifth grade, they bussed the fourth graders to Deloitte.
Yep.
They did that for two more, two years total. What year, just to put this, when was that? Uh.
About seventy six, seventy.
What year were you in?
Seventy six, seventy seven.
Yeah, I graduated in eighty five. You graduated in eighty five? Yes. Okay. Have you heard enough? I haven't.
Because the central building was being torn down when I was
I've only gone by three years.
And they needed time to modify Twentieth Street to accommodate all those students.
It could be additional.
Yeah. Well.
Well, that's cool.
But I brought that up.
Thanks for the history, that's kind of neat, actually.
Yeah. I don't remember much.
Anything else, Mr. Mober? Thanks for eating up some time there, good job. Do you have?
Okay, I'm, I don't have anything to
You don't?
I did have.
Miss Hayden, please.
Well, now I'm out of the mood, but the only, you know, we had our, uh, mental health and the advisory board and all of those meetings, and so right after it was over, I had all these handouts, and the only one I'm gonna pass around just for your reading interpretation, don't ask me a lot of questions about this, because this is exactly the way the report came. But I wanted to point out Profford County nothing, that's the jail report.
There's sorry, one in April twenty
Yeah, April, maybe, but otherwise.
Yeah, zeros all possible in
I just, uh, I just printed that off for you.
And this is for?
The jail is for the, uh, appointments for the jail. It's actually the rolling hills, uh, and like I said, don't ask me a lot of questions about it, it just came off as the jail report. And I just looked at it and I always keyed into Profford County and see how we're using the program. Uh, yeah, zeros.
So where do you have a jail report from?
Uh, the people that are mental health, uh, advisor or, uh, people visit and actually see people in the jails.
How many counties are there running hills?
Uh, nine.
How come we don't have all that?
Pocahontas, Humboldt, Ida, Villavista, Sac, Profford.
I guess, I don't know that.
Carol's on here, DV's not on here, though.
Well. That's just a reply, I just like the zeros. Uh, I always want to pass out what the good things that are going on, uh, Plains area.
We got one in twenty-three till April.
One.
One.
Yeah. I'm
And that's, that's either we're in really good shape or we're getting really
You can read whatever you want out of that report, um. I, I think it's time that maybe we have, uh, what's her name, Brittany Brittany spelled differently, come and give us a report on how things going on with mental health in Crown County, like we usually do.
Yeah, but it must be outstanding.
I think I'll put that on the agenda for next week, just to have her come and, uh, kind of hear what's going on. Um, but Plains area, uh, you know, we gave them that, uh, money for, from our opioid money, and I feel like they're really going out there, uh, they're doing, uh, medication assistance treatment and opioid use training, and I'll pass this around just so you kind of know, uh, what they're doing. And then they're also doing a, uh, uh, mental health, uh.
Where's, where's Jill's office now?
I think, isn't it still down, uh, out by, uh,
Still down?
The
Strip Mall?
The Strip Mall, by
Is it still there?
The nail place, that's
Aren't they, weren't they supposedly gonna move that out of the county?
I don't, I haven't
So, Jean, I know you said don't ask any questions. I, I just maybe you can answer this one, based on your history of being on the board.
Okay.
Is it just says average age, sixty-six. That's the average age of the person that they see in jail?
That
Is sixty-six years of age?
It doesn't sound right, does it? It does not.
But is, that's the way you would read that?
That's the way I read it too, and that's why I kind of
Cause that just seems
I was looking for the
Really
to it, or the, you know, something to more to pass out when I was trying to, uh,
Maybe the average age that these people see.
I'd say forty-five to fifty.
Average age of
Not the average age of jail necessarily, but the average age of the person that these people see. When you only see one, it only has to be sixty-six.
Um.
That's a
But this says number of appointments, a hundred and nine, average age sixty-six.
But that's, that's taken all of those other numbers into consideration from other counties.
Right.
And so it does, but I think you're, you're younger than eighteen are gonna go into that youth detention place, they're not gonna, so that's gonna cut out a lot of them, you know, so I, I just, that, that did not uh, compete with me either. I passed it around only because of the zero, mental one.
Okay, I mean, because if the average age is sixty-six, that means some could be thirty-six, some could be ninety-six. You know what I mean?
I
That seems very high.
It just seems really, really high, that the average age would be sixty-six, maybe the oldest person we saw was sixty-six, that I could believe, but average age?
Yeah, that, I
That just seems
I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, alright.
So that was kind of that, um. I just, the other thing that, that I wanted to kind of pass around is one of the biggest things that people want to talk about with me
And then it's only
here lately is, uh, the fact that there's thirty-seven and a half hour employees and forty-hour employees, and I myself don't have a good grip on it to be able to explain it to the average person that stops me at Walmart and just wonders how that works and what their hours are, and um, so in doing a little research, uh, and I think that we need to continue to try to figure it out, and Terry, fill in on the exempt and the non-exempt, how, how is it that we've there are people that honestly believe we're breaking the law. I did talk to my sister-in-law who was the supervisor in Johnson County, and she said they used to have thirty-seven and a half hours, but they don't anymore, and she thought it was because it was deemed illegal. She was gonna do a little checking on it, that, um, unless you're, if you're salaried, you don't have to keep track of it, you know, you work your hours and that's what you get paid. It's, there seems to be a, a disconnect between how we have a thirty-seven and a half hour employee. I noticed when Sarah had her new employee, she put her in as a forty-hour employee. So what are her hours? If the court, if she comes to work at eight and leaves at four-thirty and takes an hour lunch, you know, how does she define herself as a forty-hour employee unless she's taking a thirty-minute lunch? But none of, you know, ha, ha, so I've been trying to see what the time sheets actually, actually look like, this is a bad news, try to get any information with a, uh, election coming up, so I kind of low one, trying to pick anybody's brain on it. But I do believe that, uh, we need to really look into it, uh, if a new hour employee is told upon hiring that they are only work thirty-seven and a half hours per week, they will get paid for forty, no matter what. This is a deviation from the, uh, Federal, Fair Labor Standards Act. Uh, and it needs to be addressed, is kind of what, what I got from somebody that I was talking to about it, um. They listen to our, our things, uh, what, you know, Cola said that the elected officials, uh, they can kind of use their discretion, but the law, they have to abide by the law, and there's federal laws they have to abide by. And so I think that we really need to revisit that from every old supervisor that I spoke with, it was never intended to have everybody go home at four-thirty. It was intended that the courthouse closed early so that you had that thirty minutes to answer your, the phone calls that you didn't have a time to answer, to get ready for the next day, to finish any work and not, you know, feel like you, if we, so somebody said, well, need to leave the courthouse open till five o'clock. Well, then they're gonna start getting overtime because they're gonna take fifteen minutes to clear up their desk, and so we're caught in a place now of, uh, I think the only other answer is to have everybody take thirty-minute lunches, you know, because we're, we we don't want to have to have overtime. There, there just shouldn't be a thing called the thirty-seven and a half hour employee that gets paid for forty hours. That's, that's just really nowhere in the Federal Labor Standards Act, um, like to kind of
Jean, when we looked at where that, when that was adopted
Uh huh.
in seventy-four, and, and your mother-in-law was on the board.
Well, I can't criticize her for that.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm not criticizing her, I mean, I'm just saying.
Adopted when the courthouse was opening and, or when it was closed.
Exactly, so I think it's been construed, I, they, they had good intent
They did, they did.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Right.
And, you know, I think what's happened is that has got a little bit manipulated, I don't, manipulating ain't a good word. Misinterpreted, how's it?
It did.
And, and we've changed the meaning of what that extra half hour was, and now people look at others, you can go home.
Nope.
And
Not right.
And, and I don't think that that's, I think it should still, everybody works till five o'clock. Once you got an extra half hour to get your things cleaned up in one day.
Yep. You know, if they refuse to adhere to federal law at the expense of the county taxpayers, without hesitation, the voters should be made aware. Um, this is just some, uh, it needs to be corrected, uh, you, you just can't tell somebody, and, and what's, what else is different about this county, the way we're doing it is, we have some forty-hour employees and some thirty-seven and a half hour employees. That's the weirdest part. You have to ask each department, and the public health is one that I kind of was picking their brains a little bit on. You know, and, uh, they've got a few thirty-seven and a half hour employees and a few forty, but you, you, without looking at the
So are you saying some department heads do have some thirty-seven and a half and some forty in their own
Uh huh.
department?
It's my understanding, but of course, I had started my conversation with, I don't have a good grip on this one either. I'm still researching and trying to find out. And I think that the intent was a good one. So somebody had said, well, it's gonna seem stupid to be here if we're closed, and I would have to go back to I went to work at seven-thirty in the morning and the bank opened at nine. And then we closed at four and we went home at five, and it gave us that chance to get ready for the next day. Um, return the phone calls of the people that were standing in the queue that we didn't quite get to. Uh, and if you went home early, if, unless you were salaried, and, uh, you know, I didn't punch the time clock, I didn't keep a time record. I could come and go, but I still got paid the same thing, but our gals that punched the time clock, if they went home early, they were paid for less time. That, that's just the way it was, and you were more than welcome to go home early. If there's nothing to do, please go home. And then your paycheck's gonna be a little less, but we didn't say just stay until five and make sure you get paid that. We'd, if we were slow, we'd actually say, if you want to go home, you can, you know, uh, nobody ever wanted to.
You won't get paid.
Take, go shred paper or something just to, uh, kind of get to stay the
And I think, you know, you brought up that they could do a half hour lunch instead of an hour, I think that should be a department head. You know, you can work that out with your people. Some wives say, no, I need that extra half hour at the end of the day. That, that could be, but I think it, it needs to be forty hours, I just to me, that's just
To be uniform, you can't be working next to somebody that's staying till five and getting paid the same thing as the person that's going home at four-thirty, or, or however they're doing it. It just, you know, uh, here's the fact sheet, just in case anybody wants to read the facts, uh. And also, you know, they kind of pointed out that just because the board of supervisors years ago made, waved a magic wand and said, this is what you can do, doesn't make it right, and they kind of called it ignorance of the law, a little bit, that we're
Board of supervisors at the time did not they set the hours of the courthouse.
Right.
Yeah.
They set the hours of the employee.
That's exactly what I
Well, I mean, the ignorance wasn't on the board of supervisors.
I agree, I agree, but that
I don't think anybody probably was ignorant to it at the time. But as the years went by, it's just got misinterpreted.
It has, and so Yeah, that's exactly
It's been going on for
A long time. But it doesn't make it right, according to the federal, uh
No, we have to get a hold of this, I believe.
Well, there's uh, one way to do that, if, if we don't get cooperation across the board. Those two, right, is open the courthouse till five.
And that was what the several people had recommended, and
I mean, if you can't control them to let them out the door at four-thirty, we go back and wave that wand again, and now it's open till five, you can't, I mean, you know? But I'm saying I want
Think of the dynamics too, of that, that being seventy-four. Cause we've had complaints and it is what it is, I was, I see how hard it is, hours, if people can't get off work and get their business done.
I've had more complaints.
And one of them could be open Saturday morning or something like
One of this, just
I mean, from what I know about the department heads is that if I would call Terry, cause I needed to come to other lives, say, hey, I don't get off work till five, could someone maybe, they're like
Absolutely. Yeah.
Every, every department head in here would say, hey, I'll stay here and wait for you.
I agree.
I'll be at the front door, I'll open it up for you, we'll go get our business done. So that's good.
Right.
I mean, I don't.
Yeah.
Right, and they should be able to.
But that doesn't happen.
Do that with every department.
But a lot of people are shy. A lot of people don't feel like they can ask that favor, you know, we know them, you know, so. But just to, to be driving in from Charroca, you think it's open till five and find out it's closed. You don't have that phone number readily available to you. And after four thirty, nobody's going to answer the phone, are they?
Well, it's not going to ring through to us.
It's not going to ring.
It's not going to ring through to us at four thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
Or after four thirty, I should say.
You go to a general voicemail.
Yeah, it goes to.
The courthouse is closed, yeah. So there's just some, and that just seems to be one of the subjects that the average working person really has keyed into and really, you know, at the end of the day, department heads do have discretion, but they still have to obey the laws. And they still are at that, the, the real bosses are the taxpayers, whether they're a department head or elected official. And a lot of folks in the general public had no idea that that's how it kind of goes. And there's been a lot of math done on how many extra hours we need for that we don't get any production out of. It's an algebra problem that they're figuring out, you know, every department, you know, per day, per hour, per year.
I mean, if this was somebody's private business and that's how they wanted to operate, that'd be their business.
That'd be their business.
But this is a governmental agency entity. And I, I think that, I, I, I think, thank you for putting some extra work into this, Jean. I certainly appreciate it.
That question. Official open-close times for the courthouse, eight thirty to four thirty.
Eight, four thirty.
And everybody's here ready to roll, that a, most everybody.
Just everybody.
Generally speaking, unless there's some issues.
I only ask that, I'm not here every morning.
I would say hour lunch is accurate. I don't know that for everybody.
Well, here, as long as we're talking about the things that people talk to me about out in the public, one of them is that so many people, all they have to get their work done is over their lunch hours. They have to run up and get their tanks, get their, do whatever.
I've had this one too.
And they just cannot, there have been times they have to go to, and I realize that, that people are shorthanded, but there should be a staggering way to stagger that.
I think most of us do staggering lunches.
Yeah.
There's only one department on the second floor I know of that closes at lunch.
Yeah.
But I don't think they have the foot traffic either, so.
They don't, they don't.
You know what I mean? I think they accommodate people also. And in my second statement, they, it's not like they're not accommodating them.
I agree.
They got a phone call, they, someone would stay and be able to help someone open the lunch hour. It would not be an issue.
Yeah, there's really just, I mean, obviously the attorney or the sheriff's department, not, some of them could have people that are wanting to come visit about, you know, permitting or anything, you know, but.
Oh, absolutely.
But generally, there's just the three departments on this floor that have everyday traffic.
Right.
You know?
There's one department that would have twice as much busy folks over the lunch hour that are trying to get things that have to be done on a certain day, and they'll say, well, I said it's, it's hiring today.
Right, yeah.
You've got one day. And all those people that would wait to the lunch.
I don't know who that is.
We either need to wave our magic wand, they were going to stay open till five, or limit lunch hours to a half hour, which don't sound like that'd be a popular.
No.
Neither one of them would be popular.
No.
Well, probably not, but, I mean.
What can?
Especially if we're somewhat out of the, not, not adhering to the.
What can worms will open?
Workforce administration.
My next question would be, what is the percentage of employees that are actually affected by it? Because in your office, and how many are deputies, which.
They're all deputies in my office.
So they're all salaried?
They're all, yeah, technically salaried, yes.
So I mean, that, really, your office wouldn't, no matter, I mean.
They're still required to work forty hours.
They are considered forty hour employees. When they work over the thirty seven and a half, they typically don't document it because it doesn't change anything. I've asked them to document it. They just don't, that two and a half hours or whatever. So your, your calculation for abuse, I guess, of the hours is not accurate. Because we don't have, I don't have the right hours. There are a number of times.
We get to our.
Mine work over thirty seven and a half, but they don't, we don't have, we will, we don't have.
Do any of your employees take time cards?
No, we don't have time cards.
No. Do all hourly employees have time cards?
No, we don't have a timekeeping system.
They write down. And even our current system that.
I guess a better word is who turns in time cards? Do all hourly employees turn in?
You mean time sheets?
Time sheets.
Yeah, yeah.
Time whatever.
Yes, everybody, everybody in my office turns in time sheets.
They turn in a time sheet even though they're a salaried employee.
Yes, predominantly to tra, I'm sorry, contract vacation and sick and.
I've told you.
Use of, those buckets of time that we've talked about.
Our bucket, yeah.
My, my response to document every hour in case some workman's comp claim would happen.
No, I know.
That if, it's not documented, that they were still here.
I know.
We could throw them out of workman's comp. So they should be documented every hour they are in here. You're going for the thirty seven and a half or a forty hour employee. At this point, it needs to be documented.
Salaried or hourly.
Yeah.
Still document your time.
Yep, because if the workman's comp deal came through and the workman's comp came, says, oh, geez, look, you were out here at four o'clock and this was reported at four fifty. Well, it's not a work comp deal, even though Terry's like.
It's written on a piece of paper, so if you forgot to write it down, you know, just go back and change it.
We're not paying it.
Right, good point, Kyle. Excellent point, I agree.
Right, it's written on a piece of paper, so you can always go back and change it because it's just written on a piece of paper.
But the new timekeeping system won't be written down.
It'll just be documented on a computer rather than written on a piece of paper. So that's not, if you're not clocking and there's nothing that says, shoot, I'm late, what am I going to do? Just come right down, I came at eight. I, I know of partners within the city that if they're supposed to work from eight to five and you get their eight fifteen, you still write down eight because that's how, what they're going to work.
More cans of worms still.
Yeah, hey, we did open up a little can of worms and sometimes you can't get the worms back into the can. But just like what we were talking about, huh?
Well, well.
Worms are.
Well, Mr. Fishing? You got one?
Okay, so the, the bridge, they're working on shoulder material today. It's got a shoulder in the area where the guardrail is going to go. And they'll put the guardrail in and so I haven't heard whether they're working on that today or not. They've been pretty good. As soon as the next step can be, you know, done, they're there. So I'm hopeful that they're going to be.
Who are we?
Mr. Graves is.
They're there.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
No. Two days, I'm hoping. We're seeding it today too, so the only thing left to do is a guardrail. Soon as that's on.
I'm sure Mr. Graves wants to speak down with us.
He does, yeah. Yeah, and so they, everything's just kind of falling into place, you know, once we kind of got past the hiccup there. Everybody's been there doing what they need to do and they can do it. And so we get it done close. So as soon as it's open, you'll be the first to know. The maintenance shutdown in Manila, they're working on foundations, so the weather can they forecast. So that should be really good. I don't know if they're going to do the forest lab, but I talked with the contractor yesterday. He's not sure, just depends on, got a week, you know, a nice weather window. They might try to do it yet this fall. Not, we'll do it this spring, so we're going to. Blascon where that's at, great crew. They're working down there on T Avenue, that first mile, and just keep cranking away until the weather shuts us down. Same thing with the bridge crew. That bridge will take us past Thanksgiving. Both of these projects will take us past Thanksgiving. And generally, we get there, we're done, so. And then we went and looked at the bridge out at the park with Chris yesterday, and I think, you know, that'd be a great winter project to kind of sneak in there and do, so we'll see if we can get in there and do that. And we did fill both of the truck drivers' positions. I sent you a text on Friday, and so we're moving forward there.
Good hires.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're pretty happy. We had a lot of applications. The McManus offense hearing is next Tuesday, ten o'clock. And that'll be here with the magistrate, so, you know, as we talked, let's take it to that point. Let a judge decide if we're wrong or if they're, you know, you know, all we can do is make our case and then let the, if it gets to that point, we'll see what happens. And so Sean's going to be there, Ben's going to be there, I'm going to be there. And we'll all answer whatever questions were asked, honestly, truthfully, because there's nothing to hide. See where it lands.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we made that statement early on, that what somebody else decided, and it's over with. I mean, who knows what they're, they side with them, side with us, or meet in the middle, I don't know, who knows where it's going.
Well, I just, you know, I think fundamentally, you know, the, the laws are established that, you know, here, you know, there's all kinds of precedent. If we start to move right over lines arbitrarily on our behalf.
We're actually wrong.
Results in chaos. And so I don't think we can do that. We have no authority to do anything other than to put it where the law says it's supposed to be, so.
Why don't you present your facts and let chips fall on them?
That's exactly.
So that'll be during our meeting.
Yeah, so you might want to move my time up in the agenda a little bit, or however you want to do it, or I don't know how that'll, how long that'll take, but I'm assuming.
Are you going to have agenda? I just need to present. I mean, we could almost take it.
You know, just updates, kind of like what Ben did, just updates. Give me fifteen minutes and I'll go from here to the hearing.
Okay. We're going to give you plenty of time, do what you need to do.
Yeah, yeah, and honestly, you know, I'll look everything over, but, you know, on the section line, we went off of that thirty-three feet, that's where the right ways is at. We have no authority to do anything else.
You want to come at nine thirty though, or do you want?
Nine thirty's fine, yeah, if it works for you, for you all. You know, I mean, I.
Don't show yourself time.
So you don't feel rushed, you know what I'm saying?
Whatever, whatever time you want to do, it's fine with me. Just can't go to ten. So.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty's fine, yeah.
Nine thirty.
I want to don't click that, that we have him done at eight thirty.
And then Rick Nelson did submit his retirement notice yesterday, and so he's been with us for fifteen years, just a little over fifteen years. I know, that seems, he's first. Yeah, and so he, he's going to be retiring and then, you know, we're just going to move some things around. I don't think we're going to, you know, hire another motor grader operator that was kind of the truck driver, just kind of fill that gap and let's see where things land here throughout the winter. So we'll be able to move people around to put people in motor graders for snow removal and trucks. And so we've talked through all of that, so we'll be, said pretty good, but without filling that position, we were going to be pretty short. And then we had, we still have some vacancies that we haven't filled.
The budget does not, is not disappointed about that insured.
Yeah, you know, I mean, everything's gotten more expensive. Fortunately, our revenues are keeping up though. Our revenues are staying pretty good. So we'll throw use tax and a lot of sales tax, so that's good.
And hopefully the grant stuff keeps affecting us positively.
Yeah, you know, anytime you can leverage dollars that are above and beyond your normal funding sources, it just helps out. If you're doing things that you would maybe be spending that money on to do, and so it, it's, it's a good thing. And so to that point, I, I caught Kyle downstairs and Ty just a little bit too. But Jessica, the new city manager, invited me over for a meeting they had yesterday with Iowa Homeland Emergency Management Division staff. And so just to kind of quickly summarize it, parts of Dennison, kind of northern part of Dennison, you know, it isn't right here, but it's kind of the northern part, which includes the schools, was designated a community disaster resilient zone, and that extends beyond the city. It goes out into the county to the east and the west. But it's not a very big area, so there's different tiers. So this one, when they start ranking projects, will score forty, forty automatic points. And then there's the southwest quadrant, if you kind of included all of Dennison and kind of that southwest quadrant of Crawford County, that's in a zone as well that would score thirty automatic points. So I don't know, I don't remember exactly what they called those. I'm just, this was yesterday afternoon at two o'clock. We got done about three thirty. So I'm still trying to gather, I'd like to get the maps, a little bit more information about it. But anyhow, there's only two areas in the state that were designated community disaster resilient zones. This area and an area in Cedar Rapids area. So, so what it does is it, that, that, it enhances your eligibility for these brick funding, which is building resilient infrastructure in communities. Okay, and so there's like a billion dollars that's available this next round. This just came out October sixteenth. And so what they're looking for, a very short window, so that the applications have to be in by the end of February. But the state staff said that, you know, they, they wanted to have a pre-application for projects in my, you know, the second week of January. And so, anyway, any entity, so it's, it's Clouse County, Blue City, school, DMU, you know, and so. My suggestion here is that, you know, so, so essentially what you're looking at is, you know, FEMA dollars, it's a hundred percent funded, ninety percent FEMA, one percent state, so whatever project you create, you develop, is one hundred percent funded. So, and I think it's a really good opportunity. You know, there's a billion dollars nationally, you know, seven hundred million for hazard mitigation projects. And so some projects that we did back in the nineties when I was involved in the flood mitigation is like this canal down here by, behind Seventh Street. That was a hazard mitigation grant project. Some of the substation levees were hazard mitigation grant projects. The levy around the DMU's water treatment plant, around their wastewater treatment plant, all similar type projects. So those are some projects that we did back in the nineties that were flood mitigation related. So this can be any type of community disaster resilient type project, safe rooms, you know. There's a whole slew of things.
Emergency management center?
I think they're, you know, they're looking for good projects, okay? And, and so, and, you know, now it's probably a good opportunity since there's only two zones in the state of Iowa. And now would be a good opportunity collectively, I think, for the governmental entities to get together, brainstorm. The staff at Iowa Homeland Security said, you know, they can be individual applications within that zone. The county could submit one, DMU could submit one, city could submit one. They just felt that it would be a much stronger application if it was collectively, the all groups all working together submitting one really good application. So, you know, I think this goes beyond.
State thought?
Yeah, that was, you know, I think, you know, that was just kind of their, their, their sense is that, you know, reviewing this on a competitive basis on a national level, that, you know, collectively, there's a collaborative element to it because they're all working together, you know. Certainly, you know, like the RACE grant that we did with nine counties, okay? The SS four A grant that I did. We could submitting anything like we did for the SS four A grant, where you could collectively get together like we did on the RACE grant, nine counties, you know, we saw collaboration with the city and the county, that helped the scoring of that. So we, you know, we received that grant, so, you know, there's just some things, you know, and you, you want a, a really good project. No one knows exactly what that is right now. And no one knows why this, we got picked. I mean, the state staff said, we're not sure why, why the, the community.
Did the state set that or the feds set that?
I think it was set at federal level.
Wow.
Yeah, so, so anyhow, I think it's a, it's an opportunity to collectively get people together, but a lot's going to have to happen in a really short period of time.
Oh, did you have the feeling that they had any idea of what they're looking at? Because that, when you look at.
This was a DMU, this was, this was kind of the DMU, you know, their, their, their assessment of what they could do, I mean.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's all this is. That sheet that just passed out was kind of a meeting. And it talks about, you know, the cost, you know, two and a half to five million dollar, and the community submitted six and a half million dollar projects. The cap is fifty million. Yeah, there's no cost here.
Davis Bacon way news though, so it's a half, we can only get half of a normal project.
Well, what you, you, you have to be careful there is that, you know, when you have Davis Bacon, it's kind of like the projects I do. If I get a ten million dollar project and I bring one dollar federal dollars into it, all ten million are subject to.
Davis Bacon.
Davis Bacon. And so that can negate.
Out of that project.
So you have to be kind of cognizant of that. Well, you know, it's just, it just changes the dynamic and change, it makes it a federal project. And so, you know, you might get a couple hundred thousand dollars, but you really don't want it because it's going to make the project more expensive because of all the costs associated with the federal.
Yeah.
So to that point, you know, you don't want to be looking at a ten thousand dollar, you know, thing over here using federal funds, which is my, my observation.
Your experience, I would say.
Yeah, is that, is that you want to have some sort of project that is worthy of the, the time and effort. Unfortunately, that's outside the area. However, you can have stuff outside the area, but it has to impact the individual, the community within the zone. It has to, it has to provide benefit to them. And so they're really looking at things, you know, from a watershed standpoint, that help, that helps, that was talked about, you know, if you're looking at a complete watershed, so that's talking about more flood resilience, you know, so. And, and enhance, you know, it has a, has an enhancement to nature elements, you know, environmentally friendly type element too, so.
So, you know, as I look at these suggestions, just because I don't know anything about it, the generators, if we did generators for more than one building, is that just one project? Or are they looking at a grant that takes care of all of these in one grant?
Nobody really knows, Jean.
Okay, very good.
We talked, we talked, we talked about that, but this is new.
Okay.
This is, we're char, this is uncharted territory for a lot of, you know.
Because I got some ideas.
Well, so, yeah, so you collectively put it together and you say, here's how we're going to build a more resilient community or area, if you will.
Yep.
You know, we're going to do this, 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 you know, we're going to bury all of our electric lines from here to here, you know, we're going to, you know, we're going to create safe rooms, or we're going to, you know, they, they kind of stress that, you know, you probably want to focus on, maybe, you know, if, if you're not going to do flood mitigation, you're going to do other things, just focus on that particular area. Don't, don't be having a little bit of flood mitigation, a little bit of, you know, this, it communicates a little bit of that, you know, and try to create one, you know. And again, nobody really knows, but you have to put yourself in the seats of the reviewer at a national level.
Yeah.
Okay, you're looking at projects in a rural community in rural Iowa. You know, what sets that, what, what, what makes that kind of rise to the top? You know, other than the fact that we are a, an area that's historically disadvantaged. I mean, the, the Dennison area and then the area of persistent poverty is a large portion of Crawford County. So I think that probably is perhaps why.
We got.
We got the designation because of our census tract designations.
You know, and, and I'd like to just throw this out there, you know, we, we're also designated as being bottom end on health, which is an emergency, you know, I mean, so, you know, one of them, emergency management type things that, that go along in that regard too, responding to health crises and stuff, you know.
Well, and, and they're, they're.
It might not be the worst thing to work anywhere.
So you think about all the potential disasters that could happen, okay? You have natural disasters, you have flooding, you have tornadoes, you have snowstorms, pluzes. And then you think of the other things, the active shooter, you know, is, is, is being, you know, how do we deal with that? How do you deal with a spill on a major rail line that comes through your community, you know? And so, so, you know, you, you, you just kind of really got to be thinking about the broader sense of, you know, do we have a place for the community to go if there's a disaster and what would they do, where would they go, and, you know, how is that protected?
They got a pipeline potentially.
Correct.
Yeah.
Craig, so, you know, again, this is really kind of a whole lot to, to kind of take. And what you see on that sheet was just one entity kind of looking at what they're going to do. That's all that. And what you see on that sheet was just one entity kind of looking at what they can do. That's all that is. It's just kind of a communication. I thought I printed it out. So you could see the potential projects and kind of the process and the cost.
The question that I have is when you talked about the map and having specific areas that were identified, if, when they talk about, you know, the senior thinner and things like that.
It's not in the area as far as I.
Right. That's kind of why I'm just wondering, that's just a dream then that they.
However, if it serves the people in the designated area, then it could qualify. So it doesn't necessarily have.
Lose points for that? Yeah, those are, you know, I don't know.
All I know is when I hear federal funding at ninety percent, state funding at ten percent, and they're willing to bring money to the table to help repair the grant.
Four panels and generator.
There's an opportunity here and I think it's good.
We're just looking for, to name a project. We're trying to identify.
Identify and scope a project, I mean, now in the middle of January.
Yeah, thirty-six months.
And then, you know, so a lot's going to have to happen in a hurry. So.
Yeah. All right. Good luck. Thank you.
Don't tell me good luck.
Tell everybody.
I'm really willing to help out, but I think, you know.
So would you be involved in these weekly meetings, do you suppose?
Well, if you all want me to be, you know, but I think, you know, it'd be important to have Greg there too.
I think Greg managed to be at that stuff.
But, you know, whoever you want, you know, but I'm more than happy to help out.
We get a seat at the table. So that's good.
Will, I mean.
I mean, on the subject matter, I mean, Kim's standing right there. It may not even be the worst thing to have her involved in it somewhat.
Well, you know, I think initially, you know, we talked about that with Jessica. We talked briefly yesterday, and it gives you a really thanks to get everybody together.
Can everybody ideas flow on quick?
Whether it's school, hospital, city, county, DMU, and say, hey, you know, we have this opportunity here, you know. And I was going up yesterday, you know, what happens if there's an active shooter at the high school or something? Where do you take all those kids when it's twenty below zero in private work? You know, it's their opportunities to have, you know, I don't know, just something, think of that. So.
Great points.
All right.
Yeah, could be a good opportunity for the community, area.
So, you know, I'm going to visit with Greg and I.
Yes.
All right.
So that's all I have. So, yeah, so hopefully as soon as that bridge is open.
All right.
I'll meet you over there.
I'll meet you there.
Well, I'm going to actually, we're going out to see my son. Leaving on the air Friday afternoon, maybe back Monday morning. But I'll be gone. So if it opens between then and Monday morning.
Stay around this week, I'll probably.
Yeah, yeah.
Children's emergency station, take a look at those.
So we should probably have a fireworks display, you know.
Thanks, Paul. I bet you do.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate you.
We didn't.
Next on the agenda is Taya and coming up for the Recovery Center for Manning Regional Healthcare.
Need more.
With some update on some future progress with the opioid treatments.
Good morning supervisors.
Thank you for having us back.
So you've all let me, but I also brought along Mika Jacobson is she's one of our substance abuse counselors, but she is starting to train and take on the prevention roles. So I've been dragging her to all the schools with me and all the education we've done and breaking her into all of that. So hopefully in the next year or so, once we have things more established and better well-planned and more concrete, she will head up all that organization. So kind of some updates, um, you guys spent some time at Arweva School last week and started the education there with that school district. So kind of what we did, because we wanted to jump in and get things going right away with some money, is reached out and offered a little bit of education right away, which we talked about. In the last month, I finally put together a concrete kind of five program offerings that we are going to snatch to schools. I did get a lot of good feedback from some of the schools in the district areas that mentioned, we like that you're offering lots of things, but we don't know what we want. We don't know what we need. So tell us. So heard that and I hope to have those five items finalized here in the next two weeks. I did meet with, like I said, we were down at Arweva, did some education there. We were also at Maple Valley at the Noto, both those fall into this count, yes, this county. A little bit Maple Valley is really on edge, but it's there. So, um, and then I can Manning.
District, don't let's go to Dallas City.
Yeah. Very large districts, but you know, the more people that are letting us in and let us talk, that's great. So those are the two districts that we've been in since I last talked to you. Uh, we reached out to Dennison, not heard responses. So I got a little bit more aggressive this last week with Dennison and reached out to, um, the dean of students, um, some principals and the counselors. In addition to the counselors, we initially reached out, um, but I have not heard from back. And same with the Charter Oak School District. Um, all of those schools, those are the two that I haven't heard back from yet in this county. So I start off gentle, then I'll get a little bit more aggressive. But trying not to overbear any school districts. They're obviously busy, have a lot of things going on too. So finding the best way to get into those schools.
How do you like, like with Charter Oaks now, that's eighth grade below. I mean, you got a whole different type of program that you go to them with because there's been a lot less.
So we're not, we're not going less than sixth grade. Those kids, it would probably be more of an instant type of situation if, um, so one of the programs, one of the things I'm putting together is educating school counselors on how to handle kids with addiction, or if the kid comes to them looking for the help, what do they do next? What resources do we have in each county for those school districts? So that's one of the programs we're offering. Um, I can Manning is kind of going to be our test dummy here with everything. They are opting into all five options that we have. And I'm working with Sarah at home and Rachel Merkel over there to kind of iron out the kinks this year, working with some of the other schools as well and getting good feedback to see what we need to fix for next year. Um, but that way we're also a repeat offender every single year in the school district. And they just know that, hey, we have plans for Red Ribbon Week, we're doing a speaker, or that, um, at January's teacher in service is when we're going to do some education for the teachers. And that it's planned every year and we're not at the beginning of the year trying to play this game of, well, what can we do this year? More of a set program routine. This is what we're doing, um, with five different education tracks. I can Manning is going to let us implement all five of them.
What are the five options?
So the five things we're looking at is one, education to the guidance counselor on what to do, um, what resources do we have?
Identify individuals that need it or just a broad.
So multiple things like is I'll have this ironed out and I'll email it out.
Okay, all right, no worries.
But the education for the counselors is yes, what to watch for, what are signs of addiction in adolescents? What signs do they need to be concerned at? Maybe they already watch for concerned home lives. So not only on that, but watch that the child might be the one having an issue. What are signs and symptoms of that? If a child's drinking comes and asks for help, because it does happen, what are their next steps? What are they allowed to do within the school district? And what resources do we have in the community that we can help them with and that phone call that they can make and we can come up to them?
They're identifying children who may be struggling because of the addiction of the home life?
No.
No.
I apologize. Um, addiction, addiction in general, like they currently already watch for kids that might struggle at home, like food and things like that. So just, yeah, just other things to watch for, focusing on vapes, cigarettes, alcohol. Depending on the age you're looking at, depends on which key signs we follow that. So developing some resources for them to have. Um, and we've got some, we already have great resources. Why we haven't been better at getting them up to the schools, I don't have that answer. Okay. Sorry. I just.
Excuse me for interrupting.
Ask all the questions. I appreciate.
Write them down so that that's my time.
So our counselors, second is education to all school employees on Narcan use. I know I've tried to talk about Narcan, one of the things that it is, yes, it is kind of controversial, but if we have the ability to have it and use it when we need it, people need to know how to use that. So educating teachers, we already teach them how to do CPR every year. We teach them how to do stop the bleed at lots of schools. Why are we not teaching this as well? So getting into their in-service, um, one in-service a year, they plan those out ahead of time throughout the years, like all of this years are mostly booked, but we have got a couple of schools responded back that they feel like they can get us in there to talk about one Narcan education for them. But then making sure they all know the resources that we do have if they have a student come to them, because not every student's going to go to the guidance counselor. If they have a favorite teacher, that's who they're going to trust or reach out to. So they all need a little bit of education on go to the guidance counselor next. Or, hey, Nika and Taya have resources out at Manning, we'll call them and see what we can offer this child. What resources do we have? What education can we offer them? So those are kind of the two education pieces for the adults. When it comes to classroom education, the layout that I presented to the teachers and to the guidance counselors or principals that I've talked to is I would like to hit the six, um, eight, ten and twelve grades. We're going in and giving a lecture to seven through twelve every year. I don't know if it's going to be terribly effective. Want to get that big of a group of kids. They're all distracted anyway. Can we do speaking sessions? Absolutely. If they want us to come in and present to seven to twelve during Red Ribbon Week, we will definitely do it. But a little bit more focused education in one to two class periods, not long that we're expecting, you know, twelve, fourteen weeks out of a child to focus for us. Cause I don't have that type of attention span. I know my teenage son does not. So trying to hit hard on what we can in one to two class sessions. And each of those grades would be separate because we're each looking at different challenges life. You know, your sixth graders that hopefully are only just maybe now being introduced to the vapes around them. And I'm sure I'm hitting these kids late in sixth grade. You know, tobacco use, alcohol, yes, but they're getting slightly mature enough to maybe understand some of the consequences that we would talk about. So gauging a little bit to that. Um, but they're also getting ready to go into junior high. So they're going to have new aspects coming. So we're hitting those grades as they're going on to the next level as well. Eighth grade, kind of same concept. They're a little bit older. They've probably been introduced to more to pain pills with sports and activities and what's around there. So a little bit more education on that. Always hitting the vapes and cigarettes because they're always a risk, but adding more into those grades. Plus now they're getting ready to go into high school and they have another grades coming around. So we're able to kind of tailor also with the trends. So like Nika will be at the prevention conference next week that talks about the Iowa trends that we're seeing each year.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. It's close tomorrow. So we can update our stuff each year based on what the trends are being seen in Iowa. And so that helps us being in that prevention program as well. Your 10th graders, we're kind of in the middle school, in the middle of high school there. Revisiting probably the same stuff that we did in eighth grade, but we've noticed in the last year that we've been out of the schools, our 10th and 12th graders have the most questions. The 12th grade students, we ran out of time with them at, um, Arweva last year, not Arweva. Odombin last year because they had so many questions about like kids in Adderall when they go to college. The amount of Adderall use that happens because they can't keep up with their stuff. So what are healthy habits for them to not choose those pills? What else can they do? And I have a whole list of other questions that they asked that we need to get more research on because I had basic answers for them, but I did not have enough because I did not anticipate the reaction we got, which was great. But they had lots of questions like, okay, you know, talking about the fentanyl, like what are signs that we need to watch for? And just the quite, which were good questions, but they're getting ready to go to college. So how can we prepare them to, one, still stay away from the drugs and alcohol? The real life education that that alcohol and those pills are going to be at the places you go. So what can, what healthier options can you choose in place of that? And giving them those resources and then always making sure that they know that we are available in Manning. If you call us, we will, we'll help you out, we'll reach out. And if you have friends, we always mention, if you have a friend you're concerned about, you can always let somebody know in the safety of that. So those are the kind of the grades that we're looking at hitting as of right now. Always offering the school that if there's a specific situation that happens, we will do our best to try and address that. But if we hit those grades, they're pretty consistent with our counties that we can use the same education and making sure we're getting all the counties under that education. Um, the one specific request, which I did not think of is I can Manning district, I met with them two weeks ago. They had mentioned that, you know, when kids get in trouble for vapes, they're just stuck in an office with the in detention, in school suspension. Like we'd like, it would be great if there was some education associated with that. So instead of just putting them in detention after school, which I mean, I've walked in for my child, he's having detention. They're just sitting around the corner staring at the wall, not doing anything effective. So, um, we're looking at implementing how we can maybe do something that if they have a child that is in detention for a vape, one of our counselors will come out and meet into an education opportunity at that point with them on those risk factors of the vape, um, if they feel like they're already in an addiction. We're looking at an assessment that's can maybe show them, hey, is this truly a problem or did you just get caught one time and is it not? And if they're going to be truthful. But either way, they can listen to our education and the consequences, um, that would happen from there and the health factors of that risk. I mean, teenagers, teenagers, we don't think about our long-term health effects, but um, we've got some other people that told us, including County Secretary Carol, that the things they remember from high school were those impactful, like um, the cars that come in on the trailers, which can, they could be traumatizing, but so we've gotten a few of pictures and images and some things that are a little bit more hands-on with these kids to hopefully let them see the long-term effects of the vapes and smoking and stuff like that.
I always feel like that. That's a lot more effective than the breast breakfast.
Typically, it's the friends and the trends. It's why it's family or friends.
Do you want your, why?
Yeah. I'm missing one. Oh, and then having counselors come in and speak if they would like to just have the real life, hey, this is my counselor. They can give you their story. They can give you their success story, those type of things. I tend to get a little bit of gruesome. I send a bunch of obituaries when they do go because I don't want the kids to a hundred percent think that they're all success stories. So we also take obituaries with of the people that we know that we have lost in local areas from drugs, addiction, death by suicide because of their background. So that they don't just see that, yes, we have a great success story, but these are all the people I lost in the process. So we kind of hit it both ways. And we've done that for a few years and we tend to get some good responses.
Excellent.
Has they been around long enough to, to state a long-term death on bones and.
We do have some studies, um, but I don't, I don't think I have read any more than twenty years old.
Yeah.
But we do have some significant studies of adolescents and teens with popcorn lungs with.
Define that, please, popcorn.
I probably would have to pull it up.
It looks like popcorn?
It keeps air like in the air pockets in the lungs.
So in your aviola or whatever.
Yeah, it's holding an air and different things. And just like your tobacco, it's still getting chemicals in your lungs. And they do have chemical free vapes from the way I understand it. Well, you're still getting mist. Your lungs aren't meant to have liquid in them either, outside liquid. We have, you know, surfactant in our lungs, but you're still putting stuff in your lungs that isn't meant, that it's not meant to be there. And repetitive use causes different damages.
Why do you want to do that?
Yeah. And some of the, like the things for the teachers, so we have gone online and purchased, um, pens and highlighters that are vapes that I, I would, I would not be able to pick out. And I see vapes all the time and I would never have noticed it. Like if a student just had that sitting on their desk, I wouldn't think it wasn't anything but a pen. So we've gotten to that stuff to show teachers and adults, like, hey, these are the things you, you need to watch for.
So I'm, I'm twenty-two. I'm old enough to buy them.
Okay.
Put that out there. Okay. Make sure. But, um, I just go online, type in what I want. I find a website. It has this thing like, are you twenty-one? I click yes, but it doesn't. And then I say add to cart and put in my credit card.
That's all there is to get.
Yeah. My nine-year-old knows that we're stuff.
I don't have to.
It's the world we live in.
Yeah. So I'm sure.
Any verification that I.
So that, that is the, where we've come from last time I talked to you for that part.
Thank you.
We have had it a night, um, as of December first, we allowed an additional night about patient in Manning to meet some of the increased numbers we're seeing with Dennison's Jackson closing. To the point that we don't have any space. We kind of talked about that. We looked into lots of things. So we are adding another night of outpatient. We, um, we met with CCMH over here on in regards to their substance abuse needs and the loss of Jackson, what we can step in and help with them. And Michelle Anderson, my CNO will be joining their China needs committee out here. So that will be a monthly conversation, um, to trying to see what we can build with them. And she's also been working Martha Sibley, I probably pronounced that wrong. Yes. So we've been working with County Attorney's Office to help cover the juvenile assessments, drug court, juvenile courts, trying to see how we can start building that relationship to fill those needs. Um, and where the next step goes. And they have another meeting coming up here soon, just to.
So you're talking with Nate too, then Deezy?
We, I reached out today. I have not heard a response from him, but I think that's because Martha's kind of handling everything. So I believe she's kind of been the contact handling all this stuff. She had reached out, you know, two weeks ago, they needed one of our staff up here to represent in court. So, um, and when you have that connection, it's really easy to get the subpoenas back and forth, which is so nice. So, um, starting those processes to help pick up the needs that are over here.
Transportation was one of the issues.
So transportation has been a big issue that, um, we kind of talked about. We looked at moving, um, some of my outpatient up here to the building that's in Dennison. After, I mean, two months of in-depth research, education, we did opt to not do that. Um, unfortunately, it would not be a financial, it would be a financial loss and that's not something we can do. Um, there's just no way we can staff that building with the reimbursement rates the way they are with the insurance companies. There's no way we could even break even with that. Um, so that is not currently the avenue we are going.
You really did dive deep into.
We did. We did a lot of.
Trying to make it work.
Multiple financial routes to see, you know, if we have, and that was like a group size of ten, we still couldn't break even to have two, because you'd have to have two staff members up here. You can't have one person around, uh, possible and safe situations. So, um, and not even two counselors. One was a counselor, one would be just, not just, but maybe at a secretary level. So it's a second person in the building, but maybe not high as it paid. We looked at lots of options, trying to see how we could offset those financial costs. And I know, I'm assuming Jackson probably did the same before they shut down. Um, but the reimbursement rates with an off-site location are significantly less than what we would get paid if they were at Manning. Um, not that that makes sense in my head, but that's how the insurance companies pay and we don't have any control over that. So, um, currently that is put on our no list, but always something that we know might need to be looked at again. And maybe there's other rounds of reimbursement rates change, something to look at that. So that is that update. But Michelle is working with Martha and with CCMH about transportation because we see a lot of the population we serve, they don't have the ability to get to us. So yes, we've opened up another outpatient night, but there's still probably a lot of people that can't get to us to visit. But there's still probably a lot of people that can't get to us physically, and, um, how can we get those patients transported to Manning to be able to accommodate outpatient?
Some of those folks may not have a license.
A lot of them don't, yes, so, yep, and even if they do have a license, they don't have the gas money to get down. So, and we, we relied heavily on Medicaid transports while Western Irish fans, like Carol and a lot of companies are not transporting up to five o'clock anymore. Um, because they can't, they don't have the workforce. They don't have the people willing to, they don't have people working like that late anymore, so. That has really affected the ability to serve patients is they now don't have Medicaid transports, and unfortunately, they're not reliable as it is. There are lots of times clients call me saying, my transport didn't show up, so I don't know what to do. Um, so we are working with CCMH and with the county to see what resources are out there, that seems to be one of the biggest blockades. So trying to figure out who can fund transportation and are willing to do it.
So something you can build insurance, you think, maybe?
So we have looked into trying to provide our own transportation at Manning multiple times. And one, the hospital insurance, like that's a liability, so there's only so much we can do there. But then billing and paying for it is not something that we can haven't been able to figure out in the last couple of years. So if anybody's got resources there, that seems to be the biggest challenge is getting pa- patients to us. We have the ability to serve them, but we can't go pick them up. Um, other than that.
I know they're struggling with employees as well.
They, um. They do a lot of transportation, but during the days, they also cut off a five o'clock.
The easiest would be to find a location, well, you gotta have your staff and then.
Now, the easiest answer, yes, would be opening a location here in Dennison, but having somebody do that, that, like us.
What ha- what would happen if, if like in our public health, we had an office for you to send somebody up here periodically?
So even if we took off all the costs of a building and like that type of office space, the cost of our two employees still would not be offset.
Can, can you use a volunteer for that, other person to be there, uh, just kind of throw in some things that.
He said he was gonna cover the liability if something happens to one of them.
Or volunteers are gonna be reliable.
Yeah, the other thing with volunteers is it gets close, gets tricky with substance abuse, so like my speakers that come in, I can't classify them as volunteers anymore. Or they have to legally by the hospital employees, so like I can't have volunteers come into my treatment center. Without them legally being part of our hospital staff, so we've had a recreate, we don't use the word volunteer in the recovery center anymore.
Okay, I just was trying to think outside that box a little bit, uh, some retired person that maybe has been through this system that, you know.
And I had reached out to, I mean, I reached out to Jackson for things that they do at other facilities, I reached out to some other places with off-site locations to see how. How they do things and how they get around it, and most of them get around it because there's not a hospital in the area. Because there's a hospital in this town, that's what affects reimbursement rates.
You can't meet at the hospital, is that, no, okay.
It gets creative, because not only are you meeting hospital, you're meeting recovery center roles, and then the reimbursement rates, we have no control over, unfortunately.
Two employees, full-time up here.
We didn't even do full-time. We were looking at like twelve hours a week for two people. And it's still, we couldn't get, so the reimbursement rate for a group session, um, was twenty-six dollars per person. Um, which is extremely low compared to what.
One hour, I didn't even an hour for a nurse.
No, not even.
I'd say half hour for a nurse.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Reimbursement rates higher if you have a hospital in your city or lower.
It depends on what you're looking at, so like if a patient came to outpatient at Manning, we're reimbursed significantly higher than if we would have an off-site location. So even though it's the same service, same company, we're offering those services to two different locations because the off-site location is reimbursed. Significantly less than if they would be at Manning for the same program.
So that, the, the ticket is really the transportation.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we came out to is, we'd probably be spending a lot less money trying to figure out transportation than opening another location.
Can the driver be a volunteer? Just ask and.
Leave, that's how CCMH does it, is they have volunteer drivers.
They do, yes.
So I think that's, that was some of the stuff we were looking into is then, we just need a vehicle and volunteer drivers, but you gotta make sure they're reliable, but I. Do know, we've talked with, um, Don Luntz and out at CCMH. And so Michelle and I have talked with Don and their CEO and some of those things, and are trying to work with them on that.
There's always a string somewhere.
So we've got some feelers out there just trying to figure out what the best between Marsha and.
So do they think there was a possibility for them to be able to, I mean, did they get reimbursed for the transportation then at the hospital?
They don't get reimbursed as volunteers.
So they would just, no, I don't mean the volunteers, I'm talking for the fuel and the vehicle, and, because they've got vehicles.
Did not ask that question.
The, there are some, if, if we can get a volunteer driver and find funds for fuel. That would probably answer all of the problems.
Cause they have vehicles, cause they shuttle from our small communities into the hospital during the day, so they would have.
So they just have to find a nighttime volunteer, permission to use the vehicle, because it's already covered.
And so that's why we're working with them on that situation is.
All right, sounds like you're working on.
Some options.
Keep plugging.
So we're, we are working those, but at least if we open up the night, hopefully those that can drive, and we, we don't necessarily encourage our patients to pick people up.
Probably not, yeah.
But they do figure that out themselves, that, you know, they, they, they do talk to each other, they're like, well, hey, I'm in that area, let me just come grab you and we'll come down together. We obviously don't encourage that boundaries, that's an issue, but I do hear my clients talking, so. They, some can figure out the ways, so, and we're also working with CCMH on the Spanish population, we obviously don't have any Spanish-speaking staff there. Um, but some that do speak English, they have a cultural divide, and so we're trying to work with. Some of the Spanish background people that work in that area to see what we can offer, where we can improve in that department. Because we never have, but we need to at Jackson, so, working on those couple areas on where we can improve, where we need to change. And adapt to those cultures that are coming at us more than what we've had in the past, so.
And Hispanic's just one of them that we face up here.
Yes, yes, um, yeah, there are some others on the list that have hit our, but we've worked with, um, Job Corps for years. And that has kinda helped some of our relation, but we have worked with Job Corps for quite a few years on their clients, they'll come to us for thirty days and then go back, and. We've had a good rep, um, work there. Um, with previous, we've also done education at Job Corps and related to substance abuse and those types of things, we see a little bit more of the Sudanese population from them. Than others, so, but we do have some of those things started, but learning and seeing where we need to add to our program. The base of our program doesn't change, we have a good program if people respond well to it, but some of the culture diversity that we are hoping to see. Change this way, but yes, transportation, that was our biggest battle, um, we are working on ideas, if anybody has anything, we are happy to hear them. Run through them. Any questions I can answer or?
Can I ask mine as you went, thank you.
Leaving no stone unturned.
We're attempting, we're attempting, it's gotten, it's getting a little tricky, but that's okay, we're, uh, getting shut down more than I anticipated on some things.
It's unfortunate, there's always, you know.
But things that we constantly look at are grant funding, and that makes a difference, the, you know, the grant funding, but we've already gotten, allowed us to bring on another counselor.
I wonder, you know, especially if you say you're working with Dennison, I mean, because of our disadvantaged population. We tend to actually do well with grants, so if you're gonna be able to use, you're able to use that.
We look at grants a lot, so, um, we have, we do have a couple grant writing people, I look all the time and I send it to them. We get thrown out a lot because we're critical access, it puts us in some grants, but it does throw us some out, I mean Crawford. Gets the same things, but there are certain things, like we look at substance abuse grants, the amount that we get thrown out of because we're attached to a hospital is ridiculous. It is, um, or you have to have twenty-four seven crisis stabilization, which we don't, nor do I have the ability to attempt to accommodate, that Plains area covers that in this area. There's no reason for two of us to be doing that, but then that takes quite way, way much more grants, those seem to be the two biggest things that I run into hiccups for.
Substance abuse and mental health will hand in hand, but yet, we can get nothing out of rolling hills, because. We're substance abuse, not mental health.
Correct, correct. And we're not Plains area mental health when it does come to mental health. Yes, she's coming at a six. She'll be in man to talk with us, yes.
Well, we have noticed you're a hard charger, keep up the great work.
Push you some days, but that's okay, as long as we get there, hopefully we'll see what we need to come in the next year or two, I'm hoping to see a lot of progress and. Especially with the schools, the ones that have started working with us, and we're seeing some positive feedback already, and, um, I did have to reapply with the state. So we let our juvenile license go away before I started in the recovery center, they stopped doing juveniles, that doesn't work, um, so I reached out to the state. Uh, last month said, hey, I wanna get this back in, what does it take, and I work with state very well, so I just took a couple pieces of paper and unfortunately, hopefully have it approved by the end of the week. And then we will be able to do a little bit more than school education, we'll be actually able to offer services at Manning for any child that needs it.
I think that's where we have to focus our energies on stopping prevention in the early ages.
And I truly believe that as much prevention as we offer will never stop it, but if we can prevent a handful of kids, it's something. It's something, because unfortunately, there are too many family ties in the drug world, that no matter how much prevention we offer, we will not stop it.
Well, the thing I like about what these guys are doing is, it's not, it's the whole scope, you know, you can focus all on prevention. That gets you so far, but then when you focus on the people that need the, the help. And if you can help them get over that, huh, I mean, it just all makes a ripple.
Yeah, which I think helps us see the prevention in a different scope of eyes, like we, we go to prevention conferences. But I think because we treat people, like when I go to a conference, they're constantly telling me, oh, between the ages of twelve and fifteen, people get started, no, my patients who are addicted are telling me nine to twelve. Like, where are our statistics coming from? Are people being honest? We don't know that, not the statistics are wrong or bad, they're just not what I'm seeing in this county. And when I say this county, that doesn't really work either, because I mostly serve patients out of Carroll or Crawford County. In reality, the patients in our treatment center are all ninety-nine counties. Yeah, no, we serve all ninety-nine counties, and we have multiple times in the last nine years, last five years, I've run reports, so.
Kind of an Iowa number here.
Yes, so in Iowa, this is what my patients are telling me, and they're pretty honest once they come in for help, they want help at this point, they have nothing to hide from me. So they'll tell me, no, it was nine, not, not fifteen, it was nine. Oh, I ask, I ask, like I said, there's a lot of family tendencies, sometimes friends, um, some people come from great families and. Yeah, mom, I'm still naive and I'm very well versed on addiction, and my child still had a vape for a while before I figured it out. I was very mad about it, and my child, I feel like he's not a very sneaky teen, and he still hid it from me. So. My lectures come with pictures, my children have sex like sex education at young age with pictures. Drug lectures with pictures, like I'm very a visual learner, so this is what's gonna happen, I mean.
Humans are very visual.
Yeah, yeah, it's like this is what could happen, I can't tell you can't do anything, because I know as well as hopefully any parent, I'm not gonna stop my child from doing things. But please be educated in your decisions and realize they have consequences, and I hope I stop most of the decisions, especially when it comes to drugs and alcohol, but. I mean, as apparently known, my parents didn't stop it, so how can we just help you learn to maybe choose not to make that decision or know what to do if. You did, what can we do next? So hopefully, hopefully some education, and I feel like I've taken up a lot of your. I appreciate it. Never hesitate to re- email or reach out if something happens, and I will try and make sure at least get up here once a year to update it.
Okay, new hire policy, it's definitely take action. You know who put this on?
And kinda get some ideas from other entities on how they do it, uh, retention, so we got our department heads here.
So we can help, um.
Yeah.
Gain new employees whenever we need to, we have something to offer.
And I think that the thing that most people talk about is that new person that you wanna hire who's coming from another job and they have a vacation there. And they would love to come work for us, but they just are too nervous that I won't have a single day off for a year, and I've got kids and I've got. So we need to figure out a way, in my opinion, to make that more appealing, so we can get that person who, everything was fine. Except for when they got to the part where I don't get a day off for a year, that's kind of what I. You know, there's some suggestions, suggestions that have been brought to me, you know, would be to give them, uh, accrue some data, some time early on. The problem with giving that time too soon is what I hear is if they don't like the job, they're gonna take those days really quickly so that they get those gone. Um, if you spread it out too long, it doesn't really help them, if they don't need it, then they start out with more in their, uh, basket. Then everybody else that started here, you know, they didn't get five days that first year, and then they didn't use them, so now they've got that time building up and. Uh, those are the, uh, pitfalls, I guess, and so we have to kinda figure out how to make it be fair, but yet not it, not let it be too. Extravagant that, uh, the new person has more time off than I do, kind of a deal like that, so the department heads are here.
I know a few of us talked, Sherry and Sarah and myself, Sherry came over, um, yesterday and we were talking. And kind of part of what we were talking about, that's why that additional item about vacation and holiday schedule got put on there. Yeah, no, it's okay, um, we thought, you know, great, we're gonna, you know, help with hiring, we're gonna help bring on some. Awesome employees, be able to give them some time off that they deserve and need for their families. Um, but what can we do for our current employees? Um, and that's kind of where that vacation or, uh, holiday schedule adjustment comes from. And, yeah, holiday, am I thinking right? Yeah, and go ahead, Sherry, you had some things.
So first of all, um, I just want to point out that I have an opening in my office, I've had it for quite a while. It took me four offers to get somebody because of some of our policies, and one of the big ones was like Jean stated. No time off for the first year, a couple of them had small children, what happens if my kids are sick, what am I gonna do? I've already had this vacation planned, what am I gonna do? You know, how am I gonna handle that? Um, I think our policy, one, one department head said, I think our policy is good when it was originally done, but now we'll just. Make some things, so that we're keeping up with the other, um, businesses, we. Some of my people declined because when they went to their employer and gave notice, their employer sweetened the pot. And we obviously can't compete with that because we're on a county budget. So one of the other things I was looking at, and this brings up the, the vacation holiday schedule. It was, um, during COVID, the governor gave state employees two extra days. I thought that was gonna be something that would be a one-time thing, but it continued. Um, and I'm wondering if that's a benefit we could offer to our employees as long as the state does it, I don't feel like that's anything that's gonna cost. It's hard for my department and others to stay in full function. The art system is shut down, the DOT system is shut down, so when we have issues, we have nobody. To contact or help us through those issues.
When did you know, Sherry, that, that, uh, when are the state holidays, I guess, when do you get notification that this year gonna be these dates?
Some state holidays are set, but these are in addition to.
That's, I mean, the in addition, the in addition to dates.
Right, so typically, um, let's see, I got an email on. And the last since COVID, the governor has added a day of Thanksgiving and a day of Christmas. This year, the states can be closed Wednesday, twenty-second, obviously Thursday, the twenty-third, and Friday, the twenty-fourth. We are closed Thursday, Friday. So the, so the governor also gave them Wednesday, and she, like I said, she's done that every year since COVID. And then also, um, and the extra day of Christmas, typically it's Christmas Eve. This year, Christmas Eve happens to fall on Sunday, so she's giving them Tuesday. My other, um, point on that is when the courthouse is closed, or when, when there's the state holidays like that. The JCO office is closed and the whole upstairs is closed, so. There's a sign on front door saying those offices are closed, so people think the whole courthouse is closed. And typically our traffic is, um, a lot smaller this day, so I didn't feel like it would hurt us to extend that benefit to our employees.
As one who used to work at a bank and the courthouse was closed, world stops there then too. Cause you can't file a mortgage, you can't take your, uh, titles up, you can't do anything, so that would mean that everybody else in the county. Has to just stop doing business for Wednesday, Thursday, of course, uh, Friday, we're all open, those Wednesdays and those, so. What, what do they do? All of our businesses that wanna bring their, you know, business up here, we're, we're a ser- we're service industry. All of our businesses that want to bring their, you know, business up here, we're, we're a cer- we're service industry.
And it's all just for discussion purposes. That's a discussion point that I didn't think of.
Paul, do you have something?
Just, and I'm gonna have to step out here about ten minutes, it's gonna be eleven, but anyhow. Uh regarding the new employees, uh, you know, the benefit of having some time off has been historically a challenge. We've always been able to hire good employees. Uh, we continue to, to do that, although it was shrinking. But anyhow, um, pleasingly, I've worked with them to, to try to, you know, give them some downtime. So that, you know, that's, that's a nice uh thing to have available, but perhaps you might want to consider, you know, because you're correct, employee works for you for six months and you give them a bunch of vacation, they take it and leave. But, you know, I've thought about, you know, maybe, because they get one floating holiday, okay, which is essentially a vacation day. And then each quarter, they're here three months, they get a day of vacation. They're here six months, they get another day, nine months, they get another day. And then, you know, somehow maybe give them one as a signing. Okay, and then at the end of three months, they get another one, six months, they get another one, nine months, they get another one. So they effectively have five days of vacation that first year. Would only get it, you know, they'd have to be here in order to you know, to use it. And then after they're here twelve months, then they get their week. And then they, they, they're kind of off and running here. And then, again, this is just for discussion, so trying to figure out a way to address that when you, you do have issues now as far as like, you know, family sick leave. Sick leave, I mean, they, they start to, people like that, like, wait, you can't use it for the first time, you get a day and a half every month, so, you know, so there is some you know, and, and, you know, our, our sick leaves, my opinion, just my observation, very generous.
People can't use it.
You know, just that vacation, that time on pay during that first year would be the thing that I would say is, is a bit of a challenge. We've been able, we've gotten so, so that's just my, my thoughts.
And we do throw out, you know, if you have to take a day off, you can do it without pay. And that's, you know, typical in other places too, that, that's just the.
And that's what we do, do you make it up to that point, you know?
Dave, you had something?
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess the, the long and short is we're all having problems hiring people. And our revenue, we all know it, isn't gonna be there to offer these wages that will draw people in. So we have to think outside the box to entice people. I think this is the one good way to do it. And I like what you said, Paul. I mean, I like, here you got a day, accrue a day after three months, day, simple, simple, simple. And at the end of your first year, there's no buyout. There's, if you didn't use those five days, you get, you're done. You, your next year, your twelve-month starts, you got your week, done. I think that could be a really good way to.
I agree.
And that's. Entice new hires without much.
We don't all get the floating holiday though.
But if you have a day upfront on hire and then you accrue a day at three months.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we have a floating holiday because we don't take Veterans Day. The secondary road department back years and years ago opted to not have that as a holiday and then took that floating holiday to deal with that. So that's why. Holiday is essentially a makeup day. The rest of the courthouse will not be working on Veterans Day.
I get it.
But, uh, but, you know, so you, so effectively, you know, and the other scenario is, you know, the rest of the people at the courthouse would have one day the day they start. The occasion, three months.
Can you use one day and quit one?
But to clarify, floating holiday is, is a secondary.
Negotiated.
I have an eleven o'clock. Okay, come on up, but here's some examples that I got.
All right.
Remember to um, VHS, they started this off.
Thanks, Kim.
They started this off with a forty-hour thing that we can use as we pleased. And it was prorated like I think Terry and everybody else was talking about. And so if you started, if the bank started in July first and you didn't start till January first, you're not out, you're obviously not getting the whole forty hours. I think something like that can be very beneficial to us and have a clause in it that says, no payout. If you don't last a year, you're not going to get, you're not just gonna walk away with an extra week's pay.
That's what I, I, that's what I was thinking the whole time. If we have something that says this initial year's days are no payout, they're just available to you for that first year and then you start with what everybody else is already doing.
The problem with not letting it carry over, you can be sure they're gonna take them. You've got it, you know, if you're not gonna get to carry them or whatever. You're gonna just say, well, I'm almost here, you're gonna have to be sick a day so I can use that day, which is fine, I guess, but that's.
That kind of depends on kind of what you should have to. Staff abuses just to use up sick time.
Yeah, right, yeah, no, yeah, but.
And in the bigger picture, things, if you can entice that good employee to come work for you because they have the ability to take a day off when they need to and they don't have it upfront in that first year.
A lot of places let you have your birthday off because that way you don't have everybody off on the same day and it's kind of a special day, so you get your birthday off. I think that's a, a fun one to have your birthday off and that way you're not everybody off on the same day, but yet you have it in your special day off and uh and I guess if you want to save your birthday, go for another day.
But my kid might not be sick on my birthday.
Then don't take your birthday off and save it for the day your kid's sick.
And sick days are another bucket of time anyways, so they don't really have to, you are accruing that monthly, so.
Well, and yeah, maybe just the easiest thing would be to accrue, switch to the, where vacation is accrued. Instead of on the anniversary date.
For everybody.
For everybody, so a new hire is accruing sick time right away. By forty hours, by twenty-sixth pay period, so every paycheck, they started to accrue hours for vacation. So when we figure that's like one, one and a half hours of paycheck. But then have those policies in there where, you know, you can't use it unless an emergency like Jack I said. Or if you don't last for a year, you don't get pay out or whatever, any stipulations.
Be the details, how we tweak that to make sure that we thought of those scenarios, because you had employees that were there.
It's still vacation.
It'd be vacation, what you label it is.
And we'd eliminate, accrual would eliminate that accrual payout upon retirement.
And then maybe like, gee, I mean, maybe even a couple floating holidays or just personal days thrown in there. I, I don't know.
I'd like to actually also, if you do that, I, I, boy, I really want everybody to take into mind that that, that, you know, in the military, we had a two-year you, you occurred, you accrued every pay period, but at two years, you were sixty days. Okay, now this was the military way and they gotta remember this, we're doing different things there. So I mean, they aren't living at home or they're away across wherever. Anyway, the uh sixty days at two years, if you started getting over two years or over sixty days, that just disappeared. It was gone forever. I mean, you had to have it you, I mean, you know, that's just that, that example.
And now. Over two weeks.
Right.
And if you don't, if you have more than that when it comes to your anniversary date. Was it correct? Or, yeah, so I mean, it's.
Very similar.
Right.
Yeah, so and that's what I want to make sure that we're, I, you know, because we've got so many different silos as it's been described. I mean, some of them go on forever and I, I think that there should be times that you, you have to have that used within. I mean, I, I think everybody should have an opportunity to use it and it's department heads' jobs to manage that, but uh.
It's important that they use it because they accrue at a different pay rate than what they, if they keep it for ten years.
Exactly.
Thirty percent paying increase that they get thirty percent.
Paid out twenty-five dollars. But that's why everything does have a cap though. Your vacation is, you can only carry over two weeks. Your comp, you have to have it down to forty hours every June thirtieth.
What is the punishment if you don't? If you are still carrying two hundred hours?
Um, there is no punishment. You can't take it from them.
But, yeah. Okay, so. What now?
If it's vacation, you just lose it. But you can't just take away from. I mean, that's on the, the supervisor to make sure that their people are below that.
So that takes me back to what happens to that supervisor person. If they're not being a good manager of their department and just allows it to just go on and.
Well, I would imagine if that person left and their budget got blown, then that's when they're gonna find out that maybe that's not a good idea to let them have two hundred hours on the books. I mean, I mean, that's, that's really all you can.
Well, that was vacation, wasn't it?
They all had all kinds of extra hours.
So how hard, Amy, is, would it be to, um?
How do you do that?
From an accrual standpoint, is that hard to keep track or who would do that or?
The system would do that. The only thing is, um, I would ask that um, if you're gonna change everybody to a prorated um or accrual, um, and do it like bi-weekly. Um, that you would, all new hires would start off with that, but the people that are current um, have them change over at their anniversary date because you can't start accruing them right now because then they're, you know, like me, I'm getting a big bucket of vacation time on my anniversary date in February, but if I started accruing right now, I wouldn't be getting that big bucket in, on February. So February, I would get my big bucket, but then start accruing for the next year.
Would that still be easy to keep track of, doing it on anniversary dates for everybody instead of doing it all at one time?
Um, I mean, it'll be a manual change, you know, I'll have to be checking everybody's anniversary every pay period, but with records for that, it's easy enough to do. And that would be the easiest way to make that change.
Okay.
So we've gone from uh talking about a new policy hire to how to get more vacation time off for the people that work here. Is that right?
They're all kinds.
No, it's not more. It's not more, it's just a different way of a, of accumulating it.
Right, you start talking about your big bucket and then getting more in your big bucket, that seems like more to me.
No, it's, it's a way it's being. What I'm saying is, so for instance, my anniversary is February first.
Okay.
So on February first, I will be getting three weeks of vacation.
Okay.
And I will be using two weeks in. So I'm, so what I'm saying is, you know, whenever we set this accrual date that we're gonna all start doing accrual date, so say that's January first. Now everyone's going to this accrual date. Well, if I start accruing my time, January one, I would have been receiving three weeks on February.
Okay, okay.
So it wouldn't be fair that now I'm only, I've only got like two days.
I was visualizing.
She's gonna earn the bucket that she has earned. So my next anniversary in twenty-twenty-five, I would have, I've already started accruing that. I'm not getting a bucket then.
I agree with your.
Twenty-twenty-four, you're gonna accrue it February twenty-twenty-four. Right, right before that in twenty-twenty-five, yeah.
So back to for new hires policy, which is what we're, gotta kind of focus on that, I think. Uh, Kim called to BV and for a new how, hire sixty days, they get one floating day. Ninety days, they get one floating day and a hundred and twenty, they get another floating day. At six months, they get a week. That's kind of a line there. Now SAC County has that ninety days, you get five days vacation plus two personal days. Must be used by that year anniversary, zero rollover and then uh one year that, at one year, they get the normal uh vacation allocation. So I thought I'd read that because she didn't take the time to call two different counties, so.
And I just, I would question, what is their sick time? You know, uh, because like Paul said, we do have a very generous sick time and some of those places don't have So, I mean, it's hard to say, try to do what they're doing. When we do have such.
This is just a part of the package and to add this without knowing the whole thing. And I think that the reason we're probably not ready to take an action yet is we still have to think of all the moving parts. But I think that we all agree, we need to do something for the new hires so that we have something to offer them to make them want to stay at least a year, you know, and be able to have some benefit, so.
Dave, would you?
So Amy, I think we're kind of talking about, it's all tied together, but we're talking about two different things. And I get what you're saying with the accrued time, vacation time. I, I don't mind that at all. But I think that's maybe something when we update our handbook, whatever, we can do all that. But for new hires today, I mean, whether it's two, three personal days or you like what Paul said, what do the department heads need to get those people hired? Is that, and what is something that's just simple that you can manage? That.
I, I will work with whatever you guys decide to do.
Because to me, I, I really liked what Paul said as far as, hey, you got a day, you get a day every three months. I mean, it'll have to be three months, but end of the year, you're on, you got your week, you got your year time in, it's gone.
That's kind of putting these two together.
Right, and that's, that's, to me, that's something that we can do now or sooner.
I think that should make.
And then we can go make adjustments to like the, what you're talking with vacation time.
Yeah, throw us help. Why don't we just allow an option if a new employee wants to prepay a week's vacation? Fifty thousand dollar a year employee pays about thirty-six dollars a paycheck if they want a week's vacation. We're paid about a month in behind or whatever, take you two weeks because we changed everything. We'd always be protected if the people, if they up and leave. We're not, we're not exposing ourselves to anything. We're offering a week's vacation. They could carry it over because you're still allowed to carry it two weeks over. I mean, it's kind of making them manage their time. They start accruing sick leave. And we just keep the same policies as we have. I have this new caveat that you're allowed to purchase a week's vacation.
How, just walk me through that a little bit.
How is that different than just saying instead of your year anniversary, you just get the week vacation day one? I mean, is that kind of what you're?
Yeah, day one, you're new, the reason you could offer, hey, Tommy's got this option. If you want a week's vacation, we'll just deduct thirty-six dollars out of your paycheck for the first year to pay for that vacation. It's, it's giving them the option to have five days off during that year. But yet they're kind of paying for it.
Yeah, I don't see the benefit though. It's not a benefit. That would be, that would basically be like just taking the week off without being paid. But got a loan.
Putting the money in your own savings account and saving ahead or you know what I, I mean.
So it's not really benefiting the employee except for getting a full week's check whenever they do.
Right, I search your fam.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Sweeten up a pot, you know, and, you know, to some people, it's appealing, some people it's not, you know, so you have to be able to please all of the people that stop.
Maybe just offer that week's vacation and being we're, you know, it takes there's a two, a lag in your final paycheck. If you fail to meet some criteria, we, you just it's a known upfront when they hired that we will deduct it off your paycheck if you fail to meet.
As long as they know it going in.
Yeah, as long as you're upfront and that's part of their pay for when they're signing.
Yeah.
Day one, you got a week's vacation, but if you don't meet XYZ, it's deducted out of your last paycheck.
What are your thoughts?
What's XYZ?
Well, I don't know. We have to decide that. Instead of trying to rewrite the whole policy of accruing vacation or accrual or this and that, I mean.
If you left, well, one of the X would probably be if you left before that year was up.
Would that be on a prorated basis, Kyle, or are you just saying a, a week? Would we started the?
You could take the next day off or next week off?
Well, would, I mean, if we're going to switch and accrue on a date instead of an anniversary, but he's saying.
I'm saying not doing that. We're not gonna do that.
He's saying just off of the first week.
Yeah, because it sounds to me like if we started that process, we're gonna start really going down. I don't know, it seemed like we're gonna be confused.
I think everybody seems to like the plan we have, you know, so when we're talking about the new hire, I, I, I just assume we just talk about the new hire and then worry about.
In a nutshell, if we just offer them a, and put in XYZ or just an X, if you don't meet X, we take it off. We don't have to have twenty-six letters if they don't meet it type thing. Or we can just say, you get a week's vacation day one.
Yep.
And move forward with it.
You gotta be.
A lot of companies are doing that.
But no, you don't get it.
That last paycheck.
No payout, if you don't use it, no, it's just, you use it or lose it the first year and then.
That keeps them thinking.
Once you're there a full year, you roll right into where.
Just take the time off and look, you know, because you, you've already taken hot, hot dog.
Sometimes.
Just makes it simple.
It's a simple.
Maybe that's Randy Coomer method.
Yes, that's the old gift method.
I think that for, for the, the concern that we have about just giving those days. and they know that they're going to be quitting, they don't like the job, and they just take that day off so they make sure they get it, but they were never planning on staying here, you know, you know what I'm saying?
And you might always, there's kind of no way around that because you.
Some things, there's no way.
Some people will play in the head like that, oh, I don't like it, but I'm gonna stay and use those days.
That's right, that's right.
You know, unfortunately, we.
I've seen it all, it pays to be around for a long, long.
But that's only gonna be a five days, is that what you're talking about?
But that could be someone that's been here for ten years and wait, they know they're leaving. Yeah, but they got, oh, well, I got three more weeks. If I just stay, I'll get another three weeks of vacation. I mean, it, right.
You're gonna deal with it one way or another.
If you get more days on this day, everybody that's using the system is going to know, I've gotta work till this day to reap the biggest benefit of having worked here for ten years.
I don't know, I'm trying to, trying to allow, but I bet Rick Nelson had done the math, and he's retiring.
I can guarantee you, everybody does.
Everybody does the math.
Why wouldn't you?
Do the math.
I did the math.
She knows the math.
I did the math, but I ran some secondary roads to here.
Yeah, 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 don't, yeah, the math is, is, it's all over the, that's, yeah. So we can't fight the math, but I think that that is a very fair way to, to do it.
Your X is simple.
As long as you.
Last a year's ducked, that week is ducked up.
Yeah, it's that, that.
Is that legal?
We don't know about legal, legal.
It's called vacation that it's wages and they're giving it.
Right. He did say that.
Yes, I mean, that's what.
We'll call, that's why we're not making a decision today, calling Jack.
It's a floating holiday, forty hours floating holiday.
It's just that if you can't afford to give away a week's vacation, then you can't afford to give a week's vacation.
But, but that's still, that's semantics of that, it's sort of be, we're going to take.
We're, well, we're using this to try to help keep our.
Yeah.
Right, mo- the majority of the employees are gonna stay.
I mean, we have some turnover, but compared to a lot of jobs out there, our turnover is very, very, very minimal. It's not, this is not an extremely demanding career field.
To be legal or. Five days is, you get five days upfront, just give them.
Yeah.
And if you're.
You're gonna have some turnover, and you're gonna have to accept that.
You have to accept, some people are gonna, in the system, that, there's no way around some people doing that.
Chris, how many full timers do you have?
Oh, seven.
Seven, you know, and very seldom do they leave. Your, your, your part timers turnover.
Part-time, yeah, well, it's different, a little different now. Like, we have permanent part-time, basically it works for Cal that we can fill generally.
But this word, part-time.
That's like fifteen hundred hours a year.
You don't get five days for a part-time position, correct?
It's a full-time.
This is full-time.
You gotta raise your last nine months and then the.
There's some part-time that get prorated.
There are a few employees that get prorated vacation.
Yeah, part-time, there are part-time positions that get prorated, based on how many their hours work. It's based on their hours worked.
Okay, so the five days would be prorated for a part-time job. And you got a week upfront.
Yeah, our part-time people, after they work one year, they start getting like a percentage of their vacation every payroll for every hour that they work.
So this is for full-time and full-time. New hire only one year.
Yeah, well, deal with the part-timers because they can, they cannot work and not get paid, and that's why they are part-time, so they don't have to be in that rat race asking for a payoff. But I think, uh, um, if it's not a good fit, whether they're gonna get a week's vacation or not, they're, they're not gonna stay. You know, if it's just not a good fit, if, if they just, you know, go back to where they were because they just are more comfortable, they're not gonna stay here for another three months because they're gonna get a week of vacation or whatever. They're going now because that, that's not a good fit. And that's gonna happen, you know, and so I think, uh, oh, most of the time you hire somebody and they stay until they're ready to retire. That's been kind of the goal, you know, that's the goal. If it's not a good fit, you can't pay that, you can't pay enough.
When you're, when we're looking at our vacation schedule, maybe somebody said it, I didn't hear. So if we did the one week upfront, currently, after one year, they get one week, would they still get that? One year is five days, two years is ten days, eight years is fifteen days.
I think that you just roll right into that, even if they didn't use that, that week up proposing, and they chose to carry it over, they're only gonna get another week.
So it's possible, on their one-year anniversary, they could have two weeks.
Right, that's what I'm proposed, because I mean, the complaint was, they're not complaint, but this, people aren't coming because they've got a vacation or whatever.
My mind's saying, send to the part employees that they don't get that till they're here for two years.
At some point in time, we're gonna have to draw a line in the sand and, and jump over it.
Yeah.
Right, this is truly for that first year hire.
Right.
Given the time they need off till they get here a year to get that week.
Yep, and I would ask that people that have been here less than a year, maybe give it to them? Or because, how can we hire someone new when someone just started a month ago?
Now, look what you got here. Yeah.
So I've got one that's four months and I feel like she should get it, because the one that I've got starting at the end of November is going to get it.
That is, that would just cause so much trouble, seriously.
How was that one?
So I agree with that.
If you're already nineteen, you gotta drink, but if you're.
Yeah, but if you're eighteen, three hundred and sixty-four days.
I love it, tell you exactly. I'm sure it wasn't gonna be your first drink, I'm just saying.
These are the things that we keep, we're, we're, and I'm not saying that we're wrong with the real hires, but some point in time, we've gotta draw a line in the sand, otherwise we'll never, we'll never step over that line. Well, the line will just keep moving.
But we don't have very many that it would affect.
How many employees do we have that have been here less than a year?
I have one, she's got one.
You have none.
I have none.
Yeah, I've got ten.
Almost two years.
Paul's kind of.
Not that they really.
You have none?
And we said, anybody that's been here less than a year, we're not, it's not gonna be that many people.
Right.
So basically, you're looking at two people you're addition.
But don't tell them they're getting it yet.
Unless, unless, do you have anybody in that, Chris?
No, everyone, I, July would have been.
I don't think we're talking more than five people.
I mean, we don't know what Paul or.
They're not new here.
Let's try to keep it organized here, guys.
Paul has a couple.
Paul, one or two.
Oh, yeah.
Paul's got two.
Two for sure.
I do like the idea of the crew, but this is a simple, easy way to.
Right.
Well, you know, if you're talking about a benefit to drawing employees without having to add to our hourly or salary payroll, that's probably the easiest.
It's not a budget buster.
Yeah, and it's not gonna be a budget buster.
Not a budget buster, I like that one.
I think it will be.
Would you agree with that?
I could help with your emotion. Okay, so to keep it simple, five days, first year new hires, we include the ones that were hired this year, that's the one-time thing because of from here on out, every new hire, they're not gonna be able to go back.
Right, you've been here less than.
Less than.
Less than twelve months? You like that number or you wanna say?
I'm working.
Where do you wanna build the line?
Yeah, no, I don't, I'm not against that, I'm just.
Less than twelve.
Yep.
I would say less than twelve because they haven't had any vacations, so, you know, it would be really hard to tell someone, sorry. You've been here for ten months, you don't get it.
Well, the other thing is, I guess, if you show those new hire employees that, yes, we may not be able to give you the highest pay in the world, but we can work with you on vacation time or days off in the first year till you get here a full year. Maybe we foster a culture of loyalty and longevity in the workplace.
I like that. I like it.
And he still got sick time.
Is that a motion? Just saying.
Yes.
How much sick time do we earn each on that?
Eighteen days a year, three and a half a month.
Twelve hours a month.
Twelve hours a month.
It's charity made that motion.
So, Mr. Mulbowers made the motion that we offer five days vacation at a hire and in, within the first year, anybody that's been hired within the last twelve months, they'll also receive that. Isn't that correct?
Correct. There is no rollover, there is, it is within that first year to use. And, uh, no payout.
So make sure, no payout, no rollover.
Mm-hmm.
That needs to be in that.
You understand that, Sarah? Because I think you had a question on it.
I do, yeah.
Yeah, so now it's no rollover.
And be no rollover.
Because once you're here a year, then you got your week anyway, so.
So then at, at one year, they're not gonna have two weeks.
No, no.
Though, they're either gonna use that year throughout that first year, or they're going to lose it, and then at one year, they will get their one week.
Right, so they'll have five days off.
So we've actually kind of taken Sack County's, only we've updated a little bit to give them five days right away because they waited ninety days. And then at the anniversary, zero rollover, and then at one year, get your normal book vacation allocation. So, kind of taken sacks a little bit, only.
I'll second that.
All right.
Thank you. I made that motion that I just said, and then second, second was made by Mr. Schultz. Now, do we have any further discussion?
No, we're gonna discuss. Can I just say it?
Yes.
Can I say the whole thing?
Yes, please.
So new hire policy, five days vacation at hire to include those hired less than twelve months. No rollover, no payout.
And what day do you wanna start that on? Today?
As of you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm asking the guy to make a motion.
I can make it happen, I just need to, um, verify with Jack that we can do a no payout when we call it.
Vacations.
I was just put on pending verification from Jack.
And then, there you go.
Cause I'm pretty sure that vacation, it has to be.
You might be right.
Pending HR very.
We have to word it a different way, like.
Five floating days.
Five floating days.
Yeah, we can just go ahead and do that now.
Five floating instead of vacation.
Let's call it floating because they're waiting.
Let's, let's, let's let this motion die and we'll re-re redo it as floating day. Are you guys ready for that?
She can, he can amend it.
He can correct the words.
All right, so we need a motion to amend. You gotta have, make a motion to amend, you can't just.
Terry loves the motion.
Sorry, Terry, trying to do this by what I remember on Roberts. All right, do, do we have a motion to amend the word vacation?
To.
Floating, floating, you call it floating holiday?
Personal days.
Personal days.
Personal days.
Just call it a personal day?
Personal days.
Same.
Yep.
Run this flag up and down the pole ten times, we just put it on the agenda for next week and you can concur with Jack on what would the show of the warnings.
Clean up our, clean up the verbiage.
I'm fine with that, right.
Okay, so.
Thanks, Kyle.
The motion.
Fail.
No, it's already got a second, so it's gotta be actually run.
Vote on it.
And, and we'll just vote, we can all vote.
No.
All right, and, and then do it next week. I didn't want to push that for eight months.
I'm fine with that because even if you come back to Jack and we pass this and it's, oh, you didn't think about that or it didn't word it right, that's fine, let's, let's do that.
Right, I agree.
I, that's why I thought we weren't ready to take action because there's.
We're ready to act.
We're ready, it's just, we know what we want to do, we just gotta make sure that we got our questions answered.
Bring it back up on the next motion, on next agenda.
Okay, call the question.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no.
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 Here goes no, motion fails, please put this on the, on the agenda for next week again. And would you, madam, please make sure that we have all those questions answered through HR so it will actually be up and we can start offering that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, just got the card a little too far ahead of the horse. But then you're a horseman so you can keep holding brains while you're running. All right, uh, next on our agenda is vacation holiday schedule. Adam Monitor, could you kind of clue me in a little bit?
Well, this is kind of where.
This is what I.
Part of Sherry was talking about.
About the, about kind of trying to line up with the state a little bit so that if the courthouse is closed, the courthouse is closed.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, which I had the objection to the banks and.
And if I went back, Jean, I'm sorry to, I mean, not to be disrespectful at all, but if we went back and moved fold, banks are not coming in on those days.
The day for Thanksgiving?
For me, they're not.
They come check records in your office?
Very, very seldom are they.
We don't do any loans and have any cars that we bring up titles on the day before Thanksgiving.
Uh, not, not a whole lot, not enough that way. Jean is not wrong, yeah, I mean, for, we didn't submit that day, but I don't, I could not tell you the volume, I, I don't know if it's enough to make it worth it, I don't, I don't.
To this point, though, we don't, uh, we don't recognize these two floating holidays.
They're not floating, they're set.
They're, well, they're floating state holidays, is that what you said?
Well, they're, they're holidays that the governor has put in place.
For the state.
She, for the state, I don't know that they're calling them floating, everybody.
But she puts them in, that she moves them to adjust for the, the two maiden holidays, correct?
An extra one Thanksgiving and that, the basically one at Christmas.
Truck drivers would really like to have, I guarantee you that.
What's Smithfield? Banks and retail.
Uh.
I'd like to table it until we have a chance to kind of think about it.
Do some research.
Yeah.
Well, once again, I, I feel like we keep our salaries very much in check because we're very conscious of our budget.
Yeah.
Rightfully so. If the governor is allowing these two days off with our very family days, and you're talking Thanksgiving and Christmas. Other offices, state offices shut down. There's very limited business being done anyways. We're not out of lock.
I think the bank.
I just think that it'd be good to kind of get the, the feedback a little bit before we.
From the public?
Yeah.
Most of the banks are closing early anyway, and those, those days were your full days.
I, I'm out of the loop then because I don't remember us closing earlier, the day before Thanksgiving.
Not, not Christmas, Christmas Eve is the one I remember.
Yes, Christmas Eve, yes, yes.
It would be very nice, uh, for payroll not to have that half-day for Christmas Eve. Because it's very confusing for the people that work it, how much time they're supposed to get paid, and it's that.
Christmas I can see.
Or Christmas Eve.
Christmas I can see, but Thanksgiving is still a little, little iffy.
Throughout the whole county, it seems like, because the people that work the whole day, they feel like they, it's, it's always been a mess.
I've heard from Jean and Dave, Cal, what you're.
We've got time to.
Yeah.
We don't have to act, in my opinion, we, we don't have to act on it today because come the first meeting in January, we will approve holidays.
Yeah.
So I mean, we've got.
It won't be on this year anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't affect this year.
Yeah.
Right, because we've already approved this year's holidays.
That's kind of.
We can amend it.
Well, let's just wait till when we do our holidays and settle for next year.
If you got, if you wanna do, I think we, we got time to.
Yeah. I.
Well, I think that, I mean, government's offering it.
Yeah, but we're the county.
Other offices shut down in the state, which affects our county work.
Home rule.
Come on, Dave, home rule.
Words, I do.
When, when we are, just when we are operating, and in my office, I know Sherry thinks it's different. If we have problems with the DNR or the bio record system, we can't offer that service to the customer because this is. So, that is, that is something that would be affected. So, that is, that is something that would be a problem.
I do see.
Just to throw that out there.
There's those, yeah, definitely those off, you know, problems, but it'll be, be there.
We're setting it for next year, probably able to sit here and time it.
Do some research, have your bank.
We're closed for Christmas Eve. So, I know many years I have lived it and had it.
Sherry, just so that there's more than one person checking with the banks, and you have to go to them frequently, do you check with the banks and see what kind of a disruption that would be to them?
Yeah.
I would like to then, if we're gonna put the new hire policy on next week, let's take a week then to just think about and discuss with the banks, share vacation time. And if they vote no next week, we look at it, and when we set holidays, the following year.
And who, who else do you anticipate, other than banks, this could be disrupted to, I mean, like, real estate? Or car salespeople?
Yeah.
I mean.
Somebody that bought a house and wants to finish up their paperwork, I don't know, I've been out.
I mean, is this something that would disrupt them so bad that they could lose a sale? Them are the things I'm asking.
No.
It just would change the date that they close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would just.
And, and, so I think if you get their opinion, and you explain to them what you're doing, you know, what, what are objectives here? And was employee retention, et cetera, okay?
Yep.
I think that they would be, you know, try to keep our salaries in from exploding to try to maintain, cause it's just gonna create competition for them then, they're gonna raise theirs. I mean, it's just a never ending.
Yeah, it's never.
Big cycle, if, so if we're using this as a, a good benefit to help out our staffs, I think if you went and talked to your banks, you'd find out whether this is, and.
I don't think they can, I don't think they can be closed that many days in a row. I think that, that's, uh, I think they can't be closed.
Well, they might work, but they wouldn't be able to do county, their, their bookkeeping, here business.
But then they'll start saying, well, we can't go to the courthouse anyway, so.
Well, and, you know, it's like these guys said, that most of that stuff's gotta be done through the state anyway, correct? And there's nobody here.
I have somebody come in for a license, and there's a problem, and we can't do it, we send them away, and they get mad. Somebody comes in and wants something done for vehicle renewal, and there's a glitch with ours, and we can't get anybody, and we send them away, they get mad.
They can say.
What comes in in your department in that case?
I think they can do that, too.
Would there be?
We will.
There is probably not a lot, maybe if Amy's filing taxes, or Michelle is filing something through the state, um, elections.
Yeah, which she can.
Right.
Now, yours, you said they'd come check records? Like, if there's a real estate?
They buy stuff electronically or bring these packages over, yes.
Well, if they're doing it electronically, you could take care of it when you get your money.
Correct. And we have electronic type ring as well, so they, they can take care of it the next time.
Now we have all of the records on.
Kidding, I think we're starting to get our answer here.
Research it.
Seems to be coming. But I, I think you'd, you know, out of fairness to our community, probably wouldn't hurt to visit with them about it. And Brett, put it on the agenda for next week?
Yeah.
So, everybody agree with that?
I agree.
And any of you vote yes?
No.
Yeah.
Depending on what we hear back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that would be beneficial to hear, okay?
Then we can come back with, but then after.
All right.
If people want to know why we did that, then we can let them talk and.
Good, sounds good.
So, has the courthouse had nine holidays? Or?
Nine.
Nine.
Or.
Depends on the year.
Depends on the year, like this year, we don't get Christmas Eve, because it.
It's on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
On a Sunday.
Yeah, and that's why I said it would be nice just to have a whole day Christmas Eve, not half. Most people don't show up anyways, they take them.
I agree, Christmas is what, uh, I gotta go.
Typically, what happens for the other places that do give Christmas Eve,
Superman.
If it falls on a Saturday, they get Friday, if it falls on a Sunday, they get Monday.
Right.
So, Christmas Eve falls on a Sunday this year, so the governor is giving Tuesday, because Christmas Day is Monday. And there are some counties close Monday and Tuesday, cause they must honor Christmas Eve, yeah.
Right.
In our district, I do know. So, it's, it's not like, for us to just not get Christmas Eve because it falls on a weekend, that's pretty abnormal. I mean, it's not really.
Probably cause we didn't think about when we were setting dates, maybe.
When I started in O two, we got your Christmas Eve off.
You didn't?
Mm-hmm.
Well, and it's in the handbook, it's not when you set the holidays, it's in the handbook.
Moving, snub.
If Christmas Eve is on the weekend, you don't get it.
Oh, okay.
That was a compromise, I think, to get Christmas Eve off, or part of it. The compromise was, well, you can have half a day, as long as it doesn't fall on the day you're already off. That's, that's the whole, if I remember right, which are compromised to get even the half day.
I got it.
That's what I was saying.
We'll give it to you during the week, but on the weekend.
Well, you got a little bit, not the whole thing, but you got a little.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh, all right.
Okay.
History of all of it.
We're telling Sherry.
We will, uh.
Put them on for next week.
Yep.
And that's, that's the end of that discussion. Anybody else got anything they want to add to that? All right, hearing nothing. Citizens' input. Does anybody have anything in regards of that? Dan, you want to speak, turn, turn to speak? Yeah, we, we haven't noticed you here for a day or two. Okay, and, now then, anybody in Zoom land have anything they'd like to bring before the board as citizens' input? I'm guessing Ellen Martin, Greg.
Girl.
Um, ooh, can I say one thing?
Yes.
On the, sorry, I didn't say it before, on the vacation, when we were talking about vacation holidays, so, um, there was discussion about the twelve hundred hour minimum worked for when the, the year that you leave. Is that something you guys can also maybe discuss, maybe just getting rid of that minimum? So, if you leave, any, it doesn't matter when you leave, your retirement year, your termination year, whatever you want to call it, do you just get paid out, pro rate vacation?
So, it isn't, it isn't a matter of, this was a labor law, the twelve hundred?
No.
It's a county thing?
It was something that they put in place at some point, and I would imagine they had a reason then.
Probably nineteen seventy-six.
But now that.
Seventy-four.
We, you know, is that something we want to reconsider?
Could you put a list together of some of the stuff that you're talking about? I mean, really, you're talking about, because we're gonna update our handbook.
Yeah.
This is the time to discuss these things.
Yes.
And if we had a list, we could sit down and go through when we update.
And then, obviously, you're gonna be a large part of the handbook update.
Great.
I was like, we're dying to learn a lot of this. But you know, we need to update and get it with the times.
Yeah.
Now.
I feel like that is something that probably should be in that discussion.
I mean, you think that was before, like, workman's comp or before, where the, where the supervisors had an employee that maybe that was injured or something and didn't work, and now it came up on his anniversary date, you were gonna pay him out his vacation, because he hasn't even worked the last six months or whatever.
Right.
So they decided to put in a minimum where you gotta work these many hours.
Right, yeah, who, who knows? I mean, there's some weird stuff in the handbook, if you read it, there's some weird stuff. And you, I wish there was a story behind it, you know, on why, so we, we don't have to guess.
Well, it's just like this thirty-seven and a half hour thing, I mean, there's reasons, obviously, they did it, but those reasons got lost along the way, and we remade up what the definition was in our own minds, is what sort of looks like happened.
Maybe it's time to take for citizens, cause they need.
Yes, ma'am.
Agenda, can we have a date for wage comp? For, I mean, for wage comping?
Or for, for comp, comp board?
Board, right.
Um, we did reach out, and we do have, the judge is gonna do ours, so we know we've got all our, a full staff. Uh, I'm saying, give, well, how much time's a good time for them, I mean, as soon as possible?
Wouldn't it typically, man, wasn't it first part of?
Well, we've done the first part of, we've done late October, we've done mid-December, I mean.
I think.
Sooner the better.
Sooner the better. I mean.
Well, we need it for budgeting, so.
Right.
Do they need it for a week? I mean, would a week be enough time to alert them, or do we need two weeks?
The company just having to reach out with a doctor.
There's no guideline on that.
Yeah. Right.
So I couldn't give a date yet?
I know, like, with, with Bill, he just said, hey, give me a date and a time. Right, cause you got all the board members to figure out if they're available, and do you?
Are you replacing? You said something, looking at it.
I have a date to tell them, or they'll commit.
Well, what day of the week, traditionally, do they do that? Like, on a Tuesday or?
I don't know, there is a traditional day. We typically.
Anything, actually, dude, is it in the evening?
No, it's in the morning, usually about eight or eight thirty, eight typically.
Should you do, like, uh, November twenty-ninth at eight o'clock in the morning?
Do what?
You gotta, we don't.
We need to let them.
Call that meeting.
Yeah, right.
The chapter.
That board needs to organize it, they need to figure it out.
I mean, we don't set the time, so, I mean, soon as possible.
We just have to reach out.
Who's the chair of that, then, that would be? Be, believe Ted, Ted, since he's got some experience? Cause we have two members there, so Ted.
That board assigned Ted to be the, or voted on Ted to be the chair.
So Ted is the.
Ted, okay, they did.
Ted is the chair.
That's how the chair is, okay.
Okay, so Ted's gotta call the meeting.
All right.
So, I s, I think we'd have to put, alert him that we'd like them to get on board as soon as possible, and, and let Sherry know.
We'll let Sherry know, we can, I can reach out to Bill.
Well, I mean, but, yeah. Let us all know, the board will reach out.
Are you gonna let him know?
Let him know.
Let Ted know.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I, I thought, we were talking about the judge over here.
Oh, Ted can let the judge know?
But.
Yeah, we'll let Ted know. Awesome.
We got a meeting on Monday.
I have no contact information, I've never had a contact.
Monday at six o'clock.
Monday at six o'clock.
Board, organizational meeting.
Really? Where at? Conference room?
I didn't hear you.
Won't be available.
My main meeting, conference board meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, start the process. That's what we needed to do.
Just a reminder.
Conference room will be open for them, so.
If not, we can meet at the, if you got election stuff in there, on their log, we can meet.
Yeah, there's room.
Yeah, we have a Wesco meeting that night.
Did you say at six?
Need to be at the.
Kind of need to be here, yeah. Otherwise, you can get the job.
All right.
On the board, to be the hiring.
Yeah.
Enough there, you're stuck.
Don't come.
Oh, is that what, organizational meeting means?
Form the executive committee, right?
You got your letter, I didn't get a letter.
I got a letter.
I got mine.
Really?
Last week, really.
I got mine. While I was gone.
Sunny got like Saturday. They could've came Saturday, yeah.
Um, that's the look, well, yeah. She didn't bring it by yesterday.
I move adjourned.
All right. You made a motion.
Sorry.
Did you second it?
I seconded.
I got a motion by Ms. Hayden, a second by Mr. Dozart, that we adjourn this meeting, all in favor, states, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, chair votes aye, motion carries, have a great day.
Thank you very much.
During the two fifty-two.
That's.
We all know how to have a meeting, don't you?
We're having things on the agenda.